meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. Division Statement of the School Board states that every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life. The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is to provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student every day. The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budget contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The Agenda Committee meeting for the October 10, 2022, School Board meeting will be held on September 20, 2022 at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comments portion of the board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as medium. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. We want to thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. I want to invite the board members and everyone here to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. We'll start with a moment of silence first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have our school presentation. I think that's ready to go, from District 3 Brookview Elementary School. And now we'll have, here from Principal Kendrick.
Sorry, I was running just a teeny bit late traffic in Jacksonville when it's raining is no joke. But thank you for inviting me and thank you for taking a look at our school's video. We're very proud at Brookview to have moved our school from a C grade to a B, a B+, one point from an A. My teachers and staff, parents, students, most of all, have worked very hard, so I just want to give my appreciation to them, and we're going to keep up the good work and do the same this year.
Thank you so much for being here. Before you leave, and Ms. Kendrick, we totally understand, and it's wet and rainy out there. We just appreciate you being here after a long day at work, so we really appreciate that. I'm going to have Board Member Pearson also have a few words.
Sure. So, Principal Kendrick, for those of you who don't know, District 3 stretches from San Marco to Sandalwood. And so, Principal Kendrick is the farthest out of all my schools off St. John's Bluff Road. And so, she's experiencing the reverse of what I experienced trying to get to your school sometimes. But one of the reasons that I picked Brookview to highlight is because of their jump from a C to almost A, and they're going to make it this year. The other thing that I wanted to highlight about Brookview is that, like, a lot of the 14 elementary schools and also some of the high school and middle schools in District 3, Brookview is a sweet little neighborhood school tucked back in a neighborhood, so it's not a school that you're going to drive by on the main road and see the marquee on St. John's Bluff. You have to know where to turn to go down and go into a neighborhood, but also, like many of the neighborhood schools in District 3, that are older schools, the neighborhood around them has changed quite a bit. And Brookview has done such a good job, the principal and staff have done such a good job of responding to the changes in the neighborhood. And you probably saw a lot of faces in that video that looked like they could possibly be English language learners and a lot of different cultures. And so, I love the diversity of the schools in District 3 and so appreciate the job that our education staff do in responding to the changes in the school and the neighborhood and making it a priority that every student in the school learns. And we see with Brookview that it is possible to do that, even with a very diverse, sometimes first-generation, learning English students. And so, I love what they're doing at Brookview and wanted to highlight them.
Thank you so much.
Incredible. Can we give one more round of applause to Brookview and Principal Kendrick? Excellent. We have, and we wanted to thank the audience for being here. We really appreciate it. It's always a great time to be able to witness all the great happenings in our schools. And to hear even more about what's going on, we're going to have Ms. Vicky Gutierrez will bring our presentations for this evening. Give her a round of applause as she comes forward.
From engaging hands-on activities to in-depth, interactive presentations, our first recognition honors a teacher known for going above and beyond to make history exciting and enjoyable for his students. Daniel Flint, a history teacher from Westside High School, has been named the 2022 Florida History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder Lehrman Institute of American History, which is a national nonprofit. Flint says he truly enjoys teaching U.S. history, and for him, it's a lifestyle and not a profession. In response to this honor, he says, quote, "I enjoy the impact I can make with students, teaching them about our nation's history. I feel truly honored and humbled to receive this award." For his excellence in the classroom, Flint will receive a $1,000 honorarium, a core archive of American history books, and Gilder Lehrman educational materials. Mr. Flint is now one of 53 finalists for the 2022 National History Teacher of the Year Award, which will be announced in October. Joining Mr. Flint this evening is Westside Principal Vincent Foster, Assistant Principal Timothy Durkin, Executive Director of High Schools Kenneth Reddick, and Colonel Stanley Smith. Today, Mr. Flint is also receiving a superintendent's coin of excellence. Please join us in congratulating Daniel Flint, 2022 Florida History Teacher of the Year. To say that our next honorees are making a splash on the international scene is no exaggeration. We now wish to recognize students from three schools who took home more than a dozen awards at the 2022 International Sea Perch Challenge. They are Mayport Coastal Sciences Middle School and Sandalwood High School, which comprise the Mayport Robotics Club, as well as River City Science Academy Mandarin. Students from these schools traveled to College Park, Maryland in June to compete at the International Sea Perch Challenge, which hosted 138 teams from 28 states, nine countries, and four continents. Qualifying teams were tasked with out-designing, out-building, and out-operating a custom-built, remotely-operated vehicle capable of navigating complicated underwater mission and obstacle courses. The courses were designed to mimic operations on the International Space Station, and students also had to describe their engineering processes in a detailed technical design report. In the end, Mayport Middle School's three teams and Sandalwood High School's team won a total of 13 trophies, including nine first-place, two second-place, and one third-place event trophy, as well as two of three class champion awards. River City Science Academy Mandarin's two teams also impressed judges by earning two impressive awards, a second-place win in technical riding and a third-place win in the high school category pool obstacle course. So, among the teams from Mayport Middle School are Team Leatherbacks, Team Nautilus, and Team Lionfish. From Sandalwood High School, we recognize Team Kraken. And from River City Science Academy Mandarin, we recognize two teams. They are Team Lilypads and also Team Aquarius. Joining these amazing students are their coaches, Rafael Rodriguez, Chris Shanklin, Principals Chris Cook, Dr. Seren Hatcher, Aladdin Upghul, and Dean Jennifer Albertson. Please join us in congratulating these students for their successes at the 2022 International Sea Perch Challenge. We continue our recognition of students excelling in STEM, this time at a national science competition. We now wish to honor River City Science Academy Middle High for taking home a team award and a third-place honor at the 2022 National Science Olympiad Competition. The National Science Olympiad is described as a premier team STEM competition that provides standards-based challenges to thousands of students across the country. By placing second at the state level, the school was able to qualify to compete at the national level. Once they competed at the national competition, River City Science Academy Middle High students earned the Spirit Award at the Anatomy and Physiology Event. The Spirit Award is one of the highest honors given to a team participating in the event, and it recognizes the team whose members have a positive attitude, exemplify teamwork and team spirit, and who've demonstrated the three Cs of Science Olympiad, character and citizenship in the community. We're also pleased to recognize team members Hiva, Marta Lab, and Victoria Pham. They distinguished themselves by earning third place in the Anatomy and Physiology Event, and members across the board also placed in the top 15 and other categories. Joining us in celebration of these accomplishments are coaches Ahmet Datson and Gamze Usal. Please join us in congratulating these students and their school for their success at the 2022 National Science Olympiad Competition. Our final honoree is an educator who is an inspiration both inside and outside of the classroom. Chris Smith of Holiday Hill Elementary School is being awarded the Albert K. Fretwell Outstanding Educator Award by the Boy Scouts of America. Here to present his award this evening is Mr. Cole Walters, Chief Operating Officer of the Boy Scouts of America North Florida Council.
We're grateful for the ongoing partnership between scouting and the Duval County School District that allows us to serve over 3,500 students here in Duval County. The values of leadership and fun that are instilled through our program complement the classroom learning our educators provide to help prepare young people for life. Tonight, we're presenting the Fretwell Outstanding Educator Award, which allows our organization to recognize teachers, educational support staff, school administrators, who stand out from their professional peers in instilling scout values in their students. The award is named in honor of Albert K. Fretwell, a professor of education at Columbia University and an early leader in the field of youth development through recreation and extracurricular activity. Dr. Fretwell champions scouting programs as extracurricular learning opportunities that promote positive values and community service. And he later became the BSA's Second Chief Scout Executive and CEO from 1943 to 1948. The first award in the North Florida Council Chapter of the Boy Scouts of America was presented in September 2017 to Patrick Gibbons, a teacher at San Pablo Elementary. The 2018 award was presented to Katie O'Connell, principal at that time, of Brookview Elementary. And this year's recipient is Mr. Chris Smith, who's joined tonight with Principal Matt Peterson at Holiday Hill Elementary. Chris has served scouting in a variety of roles for the past 18 years in programs chartered by Christ the King Catholic Church in Arlington. Chris has always taken a personal interest in his students and cares not only for their education, but for their personal well-being. Chris brings those same values, fun, and adventure that he champions through scouting into the classroom on a daily basis, making him deserving of this year's Albert K. Fretwell Outstanding Educator Award. Congratulations, Chris, and thanks to all of our educators who take time and dedication to provide each student with a quality experience across Duval County every single day. Chris, congratulations.
And again, we have one more round of applause for all of our award winners and recognitions this evening. We'll now move on to approval of the September 12, 2022 Agenda. The Duval County School Board approved the September 12, 2022 Agenda as submitted on September 2, 2022 with the following changes. Approval of minutes, August 25, 2022, board workshop item added. September 8, 2022, special board meeting, budget, final millage and final budget item added. September 8, 2022, special board meeting item added. Academic services, approval of supplemental health education materials for reproductive health and disease prevention item withdrawn. Approval for school year 2021, school year 2028, gear up assignments, grant A attachment added. Approval for school year 2021, 2000 through 2028, gear up assignments, grant B attachment added. School choice and pupil assignments, charter contract consolidation for River City Education Organization, Inc., DBA, San Jose Prep, and San Jose Primary, item pulled for discussion, Hershey. Board member travel item amended. Ask for a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Hershey, second by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Board Member Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm curious about the supplemental curriculum that has been pulled tonight. Can I get more information about why that item's been pulled?
Yes, and I'll, Superintendent?
Through the chair to Board Member Anderson, it will be in my report when I do the superintendent's report.
Will there be an opportunity for us to have another conversation about it?
I will allow it.
After the report?
We have the report, yeah. Or at least respond to the report. Thank you for that. Other, any other discussion items? Hearing none, I'll call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item 7-0. As I get ready to start my board report, I do want to just acknowledge a couple of folks. I did see April Carney, Board Member-elect for District 2. Are you here? Oh, I see you right there. She's here, so welcome, April Carney. Also, I do want to recognize Wendell Holmes was a board member, first African-American board member in the state. His beautiful widow and wife is here. Jackie Holmes there? I see Jackie Holmes back there. She is here. She's with Sandra Thompson, the Secretary for the NAACP. Sandra, if you'll stand up, they're standing up in order. And she actually, okay. So Wendell Holmes was a mentor of mine. He passed in 2016, but what a legend that we have. And she brought with her Dr. Cindy Rasmussen from, she's from Jollet, Illinois, and she's actually a school board member there, the vice president of the school board. So if we can give Dr. Cindy Rasmussen a hand as well. So I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege to thank you. Thank you, Ms. Holmes, always great to see you. And I'll move into my report. I don't have much in my report, but I have just enough and some really great information for you. The first, I want to just thank the public and all the folks who had a hand in making sure that we got our teachers the money that they deserve. So first, the teachers, Duval Teachers United. In this picture, you'll see Darnell Smith and Mike Hightower, who were the co-chairs, along with myself for that campaign for that one-mill referendum. For those who are still, have questions about it, it is going to go to enhance the arts and athletics, as well as making sure we're taking care of teacher salaries, and it's not going to be on the budget until '23, '24. So that additional millage shall begin on July 1, 2023. There were some discrepancies, some questions about that, but wanted to make sure that folks knew that's when it would actually start to show up. And that is a four-year referendum, so four years. So you see '23 to '27. So once that four years is up, it'll actually go back out to the public. So as a board, that's what we do. We have to bring things to the public, and that's what makes it so great, that the public actually got to weigh in and vote on this one-mill referendum. So I want to thank all those who were involved, those who put yard signs in, those who just have been thanking teachers and pushing our teachers to the heights that they are, because our teachers are a critical piece of the puzzle here in Duval County. So we want to just thank you for that. As we get ready to start school, this was, this is a critical time. As you know, during the summer, there's barely any traffic, and all of a sudden, when schools open, there's cars everywhere, there's buses everywhere. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I want to thank Board Member Pearson as well for helping to bring this to our attention as well. We just want to be mindful that we have more cars on the roads, we have more buses on the roads, and we have a lot of students who are crossing busy intersections or crossing streets. So I just want to make sure folks were aware and just bring it to your attention, because we have to do all we can as a community to make sure we keep our kids safe. We're doing what we can within the four walls of the schools and those perimeters, but also, as they're getting off buses or crossing streets or in the neighborhoods, just be mindful that there are probably students walking to school or coming home from school, so you just want to be mindful of that. We've done a lot to ensure that in and around schools, we're creating the safe spaces that we need to, and we just wanted to make sure we brought this to your attention. And there's a really quick video we're going to show that's been running on some social media that we have, just to kind of bring this on home. We really want folks to pay attention. We want to make sure that we're keeping our kids safe, and we don't want any incidents to happen, so we're doing all that we can. So I want to just bring that to your attention. The pedestrian piece is big. We have a number of students who walk to school, everything from elementary school all the way to high school, so just wanted to bring this to your attention. The last thing that I'll talk about today is the grand jury report, which many of you are aware that that has been big news for us here in the district. But we just wanted you to know that our number-one thing, when we sit up here as a board, is to make sure that our students are safe. I know I have three kids that are in our schools right now, and that's the first thing I think about when I drop them off to school, is making sure that they're safe. So we're doing all that we can as a district, as this board, to ensure that that's happening. So I wanted to kind of go through the timeline and just talk about how proactive we've been, even before some of these reports actually came out. So even back in 2019, and a lot of this happened because of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. And unfortunately, that, those events happened there, which really heightened a lot of people's senses on how to make sure that we're keeping our students safe. So as those conversations started happening about Marjorie Stoneman, we actually, the district actually submitted things to the Florida Department of Education about the corrective actions we were going to take, about, hey, here are the things that we're going to do to make sure that we're keeping kids safe within the walls of Duval County public schools. And then, as you move, we move down the list, we actually requested the Office of Safe Schools to come out and do Cessor training with our principals and assistant principals in March of 2021. So that was something we proactively, once again, reached out. And then, once again, the request was made for the Office of Safe Schools to conduct a comprehensive external review of our Cessor training monitoring reports, and that request was made in June of 2021. The Office of Safe Schools actually came out and conducted that district visit in May of 2022. So that happened even over this past summer. And then, the actual unsealed and released grand jury report actually came out in August. So even before that report came out, we'd already reached out to this Office of Safe Schools, the Florida Department of Education, to ensure that we were doing all that we can to make sure that students and staff that were in our schools were as safe as they could be. We also, as a board, we got together and actually, right after that grand jury report came out, after it was unsealed, actually had that board meeting on August 25, 2022 to talk about and review all those items and talk about next steps. Then, the Office of Safe Schools sent and issued a letter that some of you may have seen on August 29, stating that they wanted to actually come and do another visit. So that is something that, they did not talk about the prior visit, but they, but they actually had already come, but they, in the letter, it said, "We want to come visit." So we're going to continue to monitor this. Our next workshop we're going to have is tomorrow, and we're going to actually be talking about it again. We're going to hear a report from Dr. Green, because the Office of Safe Schools did come visit, and we want to hear all about what they heard, what they saw, and make sure that the next steps we've already aligned, actually align with what they're seeing and what they want us to do, but also what we believe is going to be the right thing for our schools to make sure that we're safe. So lastly, just a few things. We want to continue to evaluate the scope of concerns to make sure that we have every single bit of those details laid out so we can create the corrective action that we need. We are, as a board, in that workshop, we agreed to make sure we're going to be scheduling consultation with the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office, the JSO, and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to ensure that there, we're in consultation with those two groups. And then, we're going to be forming that MOU between DCPS and JSO to establish that formative collaborative process for review and monitoring of law enforcement reporting data. So just wanted to share this and share that timeline, because we have been proactive. I want to commend Dr. Green. As soon as she found out about these concerns, she made sure that she was proactive with the means that she could be. So we're going to continue to monitor, as mentioned before, we'll have that meeting tomorrow to discuss, but safety is number one, and we wanted to make sure that the reports that you're hearing, we wanted to give you some of the detail behind what was happening within the school. was happening within the school and the school operations. And I'll end by just saying, thank you for a smooth opening. I know I was in schools at the opening. We haven't met since the opening of school. I know I got my three off to school. Thousands and thousands of other students are, are off in school and doing some great, great work. So I want to commend Dr. Green, the staff, and every single school personnel for the work that they're doing with our students every single day in our schools, and congrats on a successful opening. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Green.
Thank you Chairman Willie. If my PowerPoint could come up? I do want to echo what Chairman Willie said. We, we have had an excellent opening. It has been very smooth. This time last year, we were still dealing with a lot of transportation issues, vacancies, not enough substitutes to support those vacancies, and the information that I'm about to share, you will see clearly that things have dramatically improved for this, for this school year. So when we look at our teacher vacancies, we still have over 400 vacancies. As you can see, the content areas in which those vacancies are mostly occurring, elementary with the highest number of 133. Classroom vacancies, we are 379. Instructional support, whether that's interventionists, media specialists, reading coaches, we, we have 70 vacancies for a total of 449. But here is how Team Duval functions. When we stated that all hands needed to be on deck, we've had over 430 district staff members directly sign up for one-day substituting per week. And so for the first four weeks, we've had 1,720 days of support in addition to completing all their normal job responsibilities. So our district administrators, our program specialists, they really have gone above and beyond to support our schools. Also improvement with our substitute vendor, ESS. Last year, field rate at this time was only at 67%, and now it is at 87%. And of course, Monday and Fridays are the two days of the week where it is more challenging to ensure that we have our substitute vendor respond, but that is why the district staff has responded, especially on Mondays and Fridays. As we get ready to move forward with the 10-day count, and you'll see some information, we have some schools whose numbers are too large, and so we need to make changes, and we have some schools where their student enrollment is a little down. But when we look overall at our district enrollment, you will see that from the spring FTE projection with the fall actual enrollment, the traditional schools are up over 4,000 students, 4,302 to be exact. Our charter schools had a minimal reduction, minus 19 scholarship. Empowerment scholarship, which is a combination of McKay and empowerment, is down 207. So you can see from spring to actual enrollment, we went from 130, 134,118 to actual enrollment, 138,194 students. So the chart above is just showing the same information that is down in the matrix at the bottom. But we are starting to, again, see the growth in our traditional schools with over 4,000 students in, that came in the fall that were not projected in our spring FTE. So speaking of enrollment, we are excited about our new, first new elementary school, Rutledge Pearson, and that enrollment will be the combination of Henry Kai Elementary, Martin Luther King Elementary, and Rutledge Pearson Elementary. We've had a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion about moving forward with this first build. This evening, we're going to show you where we are today with Rutledge Pearson. Well, maybe we're not going to show you because that video doesn't seem, I don't think it's... I think the video must have disconnected.
They're working on it.
Yeah. The video basically shows Rutledge Pearson in its former location and its former condition, and it's showing you, when this video ends, there's absolutely nothing there now. It's been completely demolished. This week, they started laying the concrete for the foundation for Rutledge Pearson. So what we, we've asked them to do is sort of create a historical marker by videotaping at certain segments. So by the end, you can actually see from the school being demolished all the way to the brand-new school being built. But obviously, that video is not working today. So I will go on to add with new additions or new rebuilds. We have the Jean Ribault project. We will start our first community meeting on October 27th, 5:30 at Jean Ribault High School. Brand-new school, the new Chaffrey Project, grade six through eight. That community meeting will be October 24th, 5:30 at Charger Academy Middle School. And Highlands Elementary Project, which that is a consolidation of Highlands Elementary and Pine Estates Elementary. And those communities, project, community meetings will be October 13th, 5:30 at Highlands Elementary. Tonight, it was on the agenda to bring our health curriculum, specifically the supplemental curriculum, forward to the board, and we will continue to have that conversation, but I have pulled that health curriculum. We have decided to move forward with developing a district curriculum that would be in alignment with state standards and the requirements, that we are required to address reproductive health and disease prevention, and we've removed it, as stated, from tonight's agenda. The required topics will be developed by internal curriculum writing teams with our health educators supporting that writing. Parents and community will be provided an opportunity to review the materials prior to board consideration. We will be required to have this completed before the end of the 22, 23 school year. And then board approval will follow a public hearing once proposed lessons have been fully developed. And so that is the explanation of why it was removed from tonight's agenda. We are still required to teach state standards related to reproductive health and disease prevention, as well as teen dating violence, human trafficking. Much of that is covered through our health curriculum. Our health textbook, which is state-adopted and the board already approved, does not cover reproductive health and disease prevention. I think there may be a page and a half that discusses these two items, but it does not cover it to the level of the state standards. And so at this time, Chairman Willie, if you are wanting conversa, discussion?
Yeah, I'll give the board, if folks have clarifying questions or thoughts to Dr. Green based on what slide, and you can leave that slide back up if you would like. Board Member Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you Chairman Willie. I'm, I'm curious, what is the impetus for making this decision right now?
Through the chair to Board Member Anderson, it is clear that the particular curriculum ETR has stirred emotions whether, on both sides of the issue. Our requirement is to ensure we teach state standards. As Superintendent, it is also my responsibility to ensure my staff that they feel that they can move forward in a positive manner with anything that this board has approved. And at this time, I am not confident that that will happen. And so we made a decision, looking at other districts that also have district-written curriculum, to move in that direction.
I appreciate the explanation. You know, what you said was, it has stirred emotions on both sides of the issue, and it brings a great deal of concern to me because what we're doing is we are making reactive decisions instead of looking at what is good for children in our district. And we've got folks who are looking to stir emotions rather than trusting our educators, trusting our competent professional health educators to make decisions. We've taught this curriculum for nine years. This was set to be the last year for it, and now we'll move into a school year that doesn't have a health curriculum that's comprehensive enough to cover all of the requirements of our health education. It's not the first thing that we've done already this school year that is just reactive. So we continue to make reactive decisions to try to appease folks, maybe because we are concerned about people's level of comfort or litigation, but it's not centered on children. It's not centered on making sure that folks get what they need and what they deserve. And so for that reason, I am very concerned. Our teachers, when will they be trained on this? Will we just not have curriculum for this school year? Things are changing, and, and the reason our teachers are uncomfortable is because we have community folks that are coming here that are attempting to stir emotions, and we are letting them do that. And when we don't stand firm in our ability to, to take charge as educators of the content that it is incumbent upon us to provide for our children, then they're going to think that they can continue to do that, and it's going to be harmful not only for our school community, but for our community at large. So I am, I'm very concerned that we continue to make these hasty and reactive decisions because people's emotions get stirred. We need to stay focused on what's good for kids.
Thank you Board Member Anderson. No thoughts? Thank you. Hold your applause, please. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give a, a quick warning. I know there's, there's folks who have a lot of connection to this topic, but if we continue to have the outburst, then we'll have to, to make some, some adjustments to folks who are sitting in here. So I thank you, I appreciate your, your due diligence in that. Other folks, Board Member Hershey.
Thank you. I, I would just like to say that I know based upon my conversations with the Superintendent and with Ms. Albritton, that a lot of thought and, a lot of thought went into this decision. It was not made hastily, and I do not think, even though, I don't want to put words in Dr. Green's mouth, as you referred to emotion, I think that there was a lot behind that. If we saw the information that we received from, that we had asked research to be done by Ms. Albritton as to what other districts were doing, we saw what other districts were doing and how they were doing their own curriculum. I am confident in the decision of the Superintendent. The, the grant runs out in October, and I believe that the district heading in a different direction that specifically addresses issues for our community is something that I respect, and I applaud the, the Superintendent's decision. And actually, I called a, a member of her cabinet today to ask some questions because I had pulled this item for tonight, and it was shared with me around 3 o'clock that Dr. Green had made that decision. So I do not think this was a decision that was made haste, excuse me, hastily or to avoid conflict. This board has certainly dealt with a lot of conflict and heard from the community, and I do not believe that this was solely based on, on emotion. I think it came with a lot of thought, and I applaud the Superintendent for her willingness to withdraw this item and for the commitment of her team to create our own curriculum like other districts in the state have done.
Vice Chair Coker.
Through the chair, I want to echo a good number of Board Member Hershey's sentiments. Dr. Green has made really tough decisions over the last couple of years. This is definitely one of them, but the one theme that I think I hear from her time and time again is trying to do her best by teachers who she is trying to keep in our classrooms and keep doing the work with our children. I will tell you, as a former principal, that I spoke to some of our health teachers. They feel like there's a heightened scrutiny right now. I think that she is trying to get us in a position where we can provide a curriculum that meets the needs of our community, but also something that our teachers can feel good and strong about. And so I know this is not something she has taken lightly, and I am incredibly grateful to her for making a very hard call in a very hard moment. This does not mean we won't have comprehensive sex education. We are required by law to have it. It just means it's going to come in a different form in time. And I encourage those of you who are engaged in this topic to remain informed and engaged as we go through this process and try to do something that works for our community as a whole. And again, Dr. Green, thank you for your leadership in this.
Board Member Joyce, then Board Member Jones.
So thank you so much. I first want to thank Board Member Anderson for tabling this item last month before the election because it gave us an opportunity to look at other counties and what they were doing. We'd asked for some information on what other, the other seven large districts were doing, what adopted textbook they were using, and also what supplemental material they were using. We are the only district in the state of Florida that uses Draw the Line, Respect the Line of those seven in Clay County and St. John's County. It is my opinion and the opinion of a lot of our constituents that this is too progressive for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. I also have a question because not only are we the only one using this, we have other counties that have district-created materials, supplemental materials, but Broward County, according to this chart, uses the same adopted textbook we are using, except that they have no supplemental material, nothing district-created, and nothing that would suspect or support the idea that they've created their own. And so my question to the Superintendent through the chair is if Broward County can use that textbook and meet the standards, why, why can we not in Duval County use the textbook and meet the standard without any additional supplemental material?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. In reviewing that textbook, it does not go to the level of those standards, nor does it go to the local data that is for Duval County. There is that section in the law that says you may go beyond if your community or local data indicates the need for that. I can't speak for Broward County, but in looking at just the textbook, it does not go that deep into the, the particular standards.
And, and that's, and that's in your opinion?
Well, it's not my opinion. It is the review of the textbook along with health teachers, experts in the topic. It's not my opinion.
Well, I'm just trying to understand why Broward County uses it with no supplemental materials, and they are meeting the standard, why would we not? I mean, that's, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just, if another county can do it and we cannot do it, just kind of want to understand the reasoning behind that.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. Again, we shared the data with the numbers from students ages 13 to 22. The, the large number of young people who are getting STDs, teen pregnancy, our numbers are high. And so you, you are allowed to go beyond just the standards because of the data that is represented of your community. And again, I can't speak to Broward. That was their information they provided us, and we shared it. So again, we believe that our district can write this curriculum to support the state standards of the requirement, which by law, we have to send a document at the end of every year that proves you have taught all of these things, and those standards are part of that document.
Okay. I'm wondering through the chair to Dr. Green, if we could get this, those medical health-related data points in Broward County and compare those to what we are experiencing in Duval County? If we could do that, that would be fabulous. Also, my question this morning was if there was a new state statute that required anything to be adopted not to be placed on a consent agenda. And so I questioned the district about why this was- And so I questioned the district about why this was on a consent agenda this morning, and it was not on a public hearing. I just want to make sure that when we, you know, we give the public the opportunity for a public hearing for the new materials that we are going to put together and to adopt, and then when will that be available for the public to view?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. At this time, I don't know when that will be available for the public to view. And as I shared with Mr. Poole, it is correct that we are required to have a public hearing when we adopt. This curriculum was adopted over nine years ago. So there wasn't, it wasn't adopting it. It was the requirement that we had to bring it before the board. And so that, we brought it two months ago at that point. It was in a public meeting, available for public comment, and it was then tabled. When we put items on the agenda, they all go on consent, and someone moves it to discussion, which in this case, Ms. Hershey moved it to discussion, which then means it's now again in a public meeting for public comment. But this that we will create will be new. So now the board will have to adopt it. And at that point, we will have to have, we will be required to have a public hearing and public comment being made at that public hearing.
Okay. Because the language that I sent this morning, I just want a clarification. The language I sent this morning said specifically it cannot be on a consent agenda item, anything related to health materials. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, and you are correct.
Okay.
But normally, the procedure is the board is the entity that moves things to discussion. I have recommended that when we know, we should just be able to move it to discussion. But that needs to be reviewed to make sure we're still within board policy on how the agenda is put together.
Okay, thank you. So just for the public, we can expect this to be a public hearing when we bring the new materials before the board?
That is correct. You can expect it to be a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Dr. Green. The material that we are using now, the textbook, they'll be using that for the time period without the supplement. Is that correct?
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, that is correct.
Okay. And we still would be able to meet the required standards before the school year out once we, I assume, get the supplemental material approved by this board?
Through the chair, that is our goal.
Okay. And I know it's been a difficult issue for some in this community, but for someone who represents Health Zone One, which has the highest incidence of health concerns, I hope we have one that's comprehensive, one that is, addresses the needs of the total community. There are some in this community who feel that we don't need to teach this at all. And fortunately, the numbers belie that. The numbers indicate, and the data shows that health education is very much needed. And I applaud you for taking the bold step of withdrawing this and coming up with our own plan. And I thank you for that, and I look forward to having a supplement that meets the concerns and needs of this community, not just those who live in a certain neighborhood, but the total community. Thank you very much.
Board Member Hershey.
I just would like to clarify one thing, and I think it's important for the public to know and to remember. And I hope it ignites a fire under us to act. The state of Florida is number three in America for sex trafficking. Jacksonville, Florida is number three in the state for sex trafficking. That impacts teens, and that's an issue we really need to get behind and address. And I would just like to say that Dr. Green mentioned human sex trafficking as part of this. So when, Board Member Joyce, you asked statistics, I don't know what Broward County is, but I know that Duval County is number three in the state of Florida for sex trafficking. And I just want to put that out there as to part of the urgency and maybe perhaps part of the reason that we use additional curriculum or supplemental curriculum may not go as far. And I look forward to seeing what Dr. Green brings back. But I think that's very important for our community to know, and that's really something our community needs to get behind and address. That's not a good place to be.
Yep. Thank you. Board Member Anderson.
Thank you again. I want to just be clear about my intention. I trust this staff. I think that our district works really, really hard. They are very, very qualified experts in their field. And I know that whatever content and curriculum you all are able to come up with will meet the needs of our children and this school district. My concern is that our decision to do it right now at 3 o'clock today before we voted on this item, when there is nothing comprehensive set for this school year, that is the concern that I have. And so I think we did the same thing with the All-In program, right? We pull things before we have a replacement ready to go, and it sends a bad message to our community that don't trust that we have the best interest of children at heart. And so my caution again is going to be today and moving forward that we not allow loud people to stir emotions and distract us from doing what we need to do for our schools and for our kids. It is unfortunate that we will move into a school year that does not have a curriculum that this board has seen, that anyone else has participated in, that has not gone through a public hearing, and we will send our kids into a school year where they won't get the content that they deserve to get. So I trust you all to do a great job. I'm sure it will be wonderful and meet our needs. But today, it is unfortunate that we have removed the item and will not have something available for our students. Before I wrap up, can, I'm wondering, I was going to go to Mr. Poole, if we can just share with the audience just for a moment how things get on the agenda, how things get off the agenda, and clarify that process. So who sets the agenda?
Well, it can be set in a couple of ways. I mean, first of all, board members can ask that something be added to the agenda, but also staff through the superintendent can ask that things be added to the agenda. If something's taken off the agenda, then if it's a board member who has it placed on the agenda, then you can take it off. If it's something that's on the agenda from staff through the superintendent, then the superintendent can take it off the agenda.
And that can happen within our bounds as late as 3:00 p.m. before the meeting? Or to the day of the meeting?
Through the chair, yes, it can be.
I just wanted to be clear because I know several people had asked me questions about, how does this work? Can it be done? Can you put it back on? All of those things. And the answer to that is the superintendent has the discretion, because it is her recommended item, to remove it on the day of the meeting. And we can't do anything about that.
Through the chair, that's correct. Now, the inverse is problematic. If you want to add something to an agenda because of the requirement of public notice, that is a problem to add something, to try to add something at the 11th hour or 3 o'clock in the afternoon. But to remove something is a different matter.
Thank you for the process.
Thank you. Other thoughts or comments?
I'll just say, there's a lot of data out there, and there's some alarming rates as far as pregnancy, HIV, STDs. And the reality is that our students are exposed to these things, and we have to make sure that the students that are in our schools are, get as much education as they can. So with this comprehensive health education, we're going to make sure that that happens. I know Health Zone One is as well. And we already have an opportunity with our health and sex education to actually opt out. So we have options for families who don't want their students to be exposed to certain things. But I don't believe that not exposing students is going to prevent some of the things that we're going to see. The data has shown it. The data sets are there. So we need to do all that we can as a district to make sure that we are putting education in front of our students. It's our responsibility to do so. And I think we've talked about differing opinions on when those things should happen. But even the Department of Health right now, at the age of 13, you can access certain information and some of those things. So we have to make sure that we're doing all that we can as a district. And yes, Dr. Green, we're going to go forth with this and make sure that you have all the support that you need. But I'm, I know that we need to make sure that we have a comprehensive health education plan because it's going to be really important for our students. So thank you for the comments. Thank you for sharing that with us today. Anything else? Dr. Green, close up.
Through the chair, I want to readdress a question asked by Ms. Joyce Broward. Although it is the same textbook from the same, they have the comprehensive version versus our textbook.
Okay, did not indicate that in the...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it just looked like it was the exact same textbook.
It's not a clarification. It's not the exact same.
Other final thoughts? All right, thank you for that. We're going to move on to public comments. We are now on the public comments portion of our agenda for the school board, and we welcome your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use your input for our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask that the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. The board will allocate time for public comment based on the number of speakers who have filled out speaker cards prior to the designated time. If one to 20 speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted three minutes. If 21 to 40 speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted two minutes. If 41 or more speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted one minute. Tonight, we have 76 speakers. So each speaker will be allotted one minute to speak. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. Board policy provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20. We thank you for your time and you addressing the board.
Chairperson?
Yes.
Point of clarification. The script that you read out is not accurate. If we are allotting each speaker one minute, then the one-minute, 30-second breakdown would not be accurate. When you were reading about the lights?
Oh, the lights portion. Correct, correct, correct.
There's one minute per person total.
Yeah, do our, do we have the lights operate on a one-minute cadence? Well, they, they will? Okay. All right, so they will operate. I'm assuming there will be 30 seconds, and then the light will come on. And then the light will buzz, and you will have to stop. All right. So let's go ahead and start with our public speakers. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Dr. Coker.
All right, good evening. We do have 76 total speaker cards. We also have 24 cards that are waiving their right to speak, but we will read their wave in opposition or for and what the item is at the end of the conclusion of the speaker cards. I'll call for Kathy, and I'm going to apologize upfront. Please be patient with the calling of your name. I do my very, very best, but if you can be patient, if I say it wrong, please just correct me when you get to the podium. And know that it's, we're doing our best. Kathy, discuss if you would please come to the front here, followed by Marjorie Watkins, who will then be followed by Ed Williams. Thank you. May begin.
Yes, my, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Kathy DeClay. My husband Benoit and I are former owner-operators of the Magnificat Cafe in downtown Jacksonville. We have four grown children and four grandchildren, and I'm here for them. I want to thank you for not implementing the ERT curriculum and for considering a reevaluation of the current sex education. I think that probably all of us can agree and attest to the fact that sex is the most intimate encounter any person can experience. When parents talk to their children about this most sensitive and deeply emotional topic, it creates a bond between them and opens up lines of communication ongoing throughout their lives. To present sex to kids in school weakens that bond and reduces sex to something casual and possibly animalistic. So my question is, when you go forward with this evaluation...
All right, thank you. That actually concludes your minutes, but let me reiterate. You may leave any notes with counsel at the front if you would like to. We will now have Marjorie Watkins, followed by Ed Williams, followed by Michelle Matisse.
Hi. Thank you so much for everyone serving us. And we are a citizen and paying taxes and raise our taxes two times on fixed incomes. Not all of us get $100,000 or $50,000. We are on fixed incomes with my husband like 70 years old. So it's a big difference. So, and I'm on a sheriff watch in my area, Woodland Hills. I walk to the schools. I pray for the schools. I feed the children. I watch them when they pass. And it was a video, how much we have to be careful with the kids walking on the streets. They're very important. Watch them. So it's very important to me to not talk sex to my children and call it health and make objects and show them. I don't want you to do that, whatever you want to call me. I've been around the world. I've been in boarding school in England and Switzerland and Germany, and I've been around, and I've been from 3,000 years country, so I know.
Thank you. We'll now have Ed Williams, followed by Michelle Matisse, followed by Kathleen Murray.
My name is Ed Williams, and I wanted to speak a word against the using of $16,000 of taxpayer money for the trip to Nashville. I question the wisdom of it as far as the value to students of the school, and especially considering one of the members going on the trip is only going to be on the job a matter of days after they get back. Where's the value in that? I don't know. But anyway, I'd like to ask, vote no on that.
Thank you. We'll now have Michelle Matisse, followed by Kathleen Murray, followed by Brittany Mask.
Hi, I'm Michelle Matisse, and I just want to thank you for tabling the ETR and bringing the curriculum locally and allowing the citizens here in Jacksonville to see and go through it. As I stated last month, our children are our most precious asset, and as we lead our children in new times, it's important that we consider teaching them facts. But the families need to be included in this. And sex ed is something that is not up for politics or agendas. It needs to be something that does teach them about health and wellness, but not making it a social construct that actually tears families apart. Thank you.
All right, we'll now have Brittany Mask. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, we'll have Kathleen Murray and then Brittany Mask. I apologize, I got ahead of myself. And then Katie Hathaway, if you'll come line up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Murray, Director of County Citizens Defending Freedom Duval, First, I'd like to thank you for your continued service to the citizens of Duval. In particular, I'd like to thank those board members who answered my emails and especially those members who agreed to meet with me and the CCDF Duval Education Division Leader. Those members were extremely generous with their time. And through this, we learned that we have a lot more in common with the board than we previously thought. And that really makes me feel good because we all have the same goals for Duval. We hear a lot about inclusivity, but in fact, the supplemental curriculum was exclusive. It excluded those beliefs and values of those Duval citizens who disagreed with the LGBTQ agenda. So thank you very much for reconsidering it. There's a lot of wealth of talent in education in this room, and I'm certain that we can find a curriculum that will meet the state needs. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Brittany Mask, followed by Katie Hathaway, followed by Jennifer Coward.
Thank you. After learning that the Duval County School Board has decided to abide by the Florida law and no longer consider the grossly explicit supplemental materials on sex, I'm very relieved for the students of Duval County, although it seems very obvious that it's only because the school board got caught. I'm in my 20s. I have no children, much less any in public school. Nevertheless, I'm here. I cannot express how immensely thankful I am that my parents did whatever it took to ensure that I and my siblings never attended a public school. The possibility of the use of these materials was...
A reminder, no audible responses. We're going to have civil discourse. Audience, this has been great all year long. We want to make sure every speaker is heard thoroughly. And can we add 20 seconds back on? And can we add 20, 20 seconds back onto the clock for the speaker? I apologize for the interruption, but we want everyone to hear every word.
The possibility of the use of these materials was corrupt and concerning. Honestly, sex education shouldn't be taught in schools at all. It should be up to the parents to inform their children of such matters. As you develop new and original supplemental materials, I implore you to please be careful of what is put in them. Stealing the innocence of children is perverted. I'm pretty sure that if someone, even a friend or relative of some kind, handed a school-aged child a book on how to have sex, they would be considered a pervert and would get in trouble. I rhetorically ask, why should that be different just because it's in a classroom setting? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Katie Hathaway, followed by Jennifer Coward, followed by Willie Sparks.
Good evening. My name is Katie Hathaway, and I'm a DCPS parent. I am here because I feel strongly about the importance of sex education in our schools, and I'm really disappointed that this has been removed from the agenda tonight. Public education is for every child. I don't co-parent with other parents, and the 130,000 students in our public school system don't answer to the small minority of parents who have been vocal on this topic recently. I don't want a small minority using their beliefs to impact the broader health of our youth. This year, I have two children attending the same public middle school I attended. I've always received an opt-out form for sex ed. I received it on day two this year, and I ripped it up, because I will never forget attending that same middle school and going to school with an eighth grader pregnant, nine months pregnant. Information saves lives. It's why we teach math, reading, and science. It's why we teach sex ed. A small vocal minority that espouses parental choice, which I also respect, however, by removing sex ed from schools, you are in fact eliminating choice. Providing sex ed with parental opt-out is all about parental choice. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Jennifer Coward, followed by, and I think it's Belee Sparks. I apologize if I said that incorrectly. And Susan Erdiker after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Dr. Jennifer Coward, I'm here also to say that I am disappointed that this item was removed from the agenda tonight. I'm deeply concerned to hear that our students at this time only have 1.5 pages of curriculum available to them on reproductive health. As a physician, I can tell you how important it is that they have comprehensive sex ed. Delighted to hear from the board that they also feel this is highly important, and that we protect the health of our community. I'm deeply distressed to hear that we will have a delay in having a comprehensive and appropriate age-appropriate sex ed curriculum. And I am concerned that delaying reissuing a curriculum that is already working in our curriculum is delaying the safety and health of our students. So, if this item cannot be brought back tonight, I would ask that this new curriculum, whatever it's going to look like, be made as rapidly as possible within safety limits and implemented for our students, because every day that we delay having this education available puts our students at risk of harm, and none of us want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Belee Sparks, Susan Erdiker, and Justin Kugler.
Hi, my name is Wiley Sparks, and I'm a senior at Fletcher High School here in Duval County. Protecting kids in school through edu, is through education. And to ensure that children here in Duval County public schools are thriving through their knowledge and education, it's important that we implement sexual education throughout all of our public schools. I know that many adults preach abstinence to teenagers, but I can tell you that as someone who is a teenager at a public high school and who has witnessed many of my fellow students have pregnancy scares and suffers, and suffer from other negative side effects of sex, abstinence is just not realistic. Having information regarding sexual exploration, exploration and livelihood is safety and knowledge. And as someone who is at Duval County public schools five days a week, I can tell you that safety and knowledge are the two things preached most at my school, and I'm assuming other public high schools. So, I'm asking you, Duval County public schools, to please practice what you preach. On the topic of sexual, sexual education, I would like to bring up the idea of implementing non-heterosexual sexual education.
Thank you. Susan Erdiker, Justin Kugler, followed by Randall Lessin.
My name is Susan Erdiker. I come here today partly in response to a woman I heard speak at the August 16th school board meeting. She said that the Q in LGBTQ meant questioning. Then she said, "We're all questioning." I thought she was going to talk about love and tolerance, because we're all in a state of questioning together, but she didn't. Throughout our lives, we do question many things, and we should. We might not question our sexual orientation, but questioning is part of the human condition. We have many new inventions because of the questioning nature of humans. Schools need to be a safe place for children and for learning. For those of you who work hard to make our neighborhood and magnet schools great and welcoming for every child, I came here to say thank you. My daughter went to Crown Point Elementary, Mandarin Middle, and Mandarin High School. I feel very grateful for her public education. I appreciate all the wonderful teachers and administrators and board members and everyone who made the...
Thank you. You're welcome to email your remarks. Justin Kugler, followed by Randall Lessin, followed by Samantha Hamel.
Good evening. My name is Justin Kugler. I am here tonight as a parent of two DCPS elementary school students, and I really want to impress upon you how important it is to me as a father and as the son of a lesbian couple that my children not receive a lesser education than what I did 30 years ago, growing up in Arkansas, the son of a persecuted couple. I want my children to have a comprehensive sex education that includes LGBTQ issues, and I've seen no evidence presented that the proposed curriculum doesn't meet state standards, doesn't cover those topics appropriately, and would be in any way harmful to my children. And so, I'm very concerned that this process seems to have been executed at the very last minute to take it off the agenda, and I wonder really what, what's going on, what's at play here, because I want my kids to have the absolute best world-class education possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Randall Lessin, followed by Samantha Hamel, followed by Seth Carpenter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Randall Lessin, and I'm a DCPS employee, and I'm opposed to revising the Comprehensive Sexual Education bill. I'm one of the LGBTQ educators of this county and have been longtime standing supporting the LGBT students of this county. And I'm asking that you consider all of us, create a safe space for all students, not just LGBTQ, but all students. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Samantha Hamel, followed by Seth Carpenter, followed by Gillian Herrera.
Hi, my name is Samantha Hamel. I have a master's degree in public health and work for Can Community Health. I'm also a Duval parent with a son in sixth grade. All students should feel safe at school, including LGBTQ students, who many times feel unsafe. In 2021, 22% of Duval high school students didn't go to school one or more days during the last month because they felt unsafe. 17% of our high school students reported being a victim of teasing or name-calling because someone thought they were lesbian, gay, or bisexual. Inclusive sex ed helps LGBTQ students feel safer in schools. Research documents, this education can lower homophobia and homophobic-related bullying. LGBTQ youth are two to three times more likely to attempt and commit suicide. We must keep our inclusive materials supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Seth Carpenter, followed by Gillian Herrera, followed by Charlotte Howard.
Thank you. My name is Seth Carpenter. My wife and I are proud parents of a fourth grader, a seventh grader, and a 10th grader here in Duval County schools. I'm also a Florida-certified teacher with a master's in education and a current substitute here in Duval County. It seems to me that from our over-vigilant dress coding, which focuses unfair-lane girls' bodies, limiting reading choices, limiting sensible health education, cutting off resources and opportunities for students, families, and teachers because they don't fit the mold of certain groups, that there's a greater focus on policing our children rather than educating them. My son's fourth-grade favorite teacher is not allowed to talk about her family, as if she should be ashamed of the people who she loves the most. We should be teaching children to value and appreciate diversity, not judge one another, and certainly not hate. And finally, when I stand in the morning, which I do every morning with children, saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and they say liberty and justice for all, we should know that all is...
Sir, please, please address the board at the front, not the audience. Thank you.
We should, we should remember that all, or they should feel that all is inclusive, not exclusive. They shouldn't be thinking, "Does y'all include me?" And if it doesn't include them, no child should be thinking, "Why not me?"
Thank you. Gillian Herrera, Charlotte Howard, followed by Richard Thomas. And, and thank you for turning this way so we could hear everything for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Gillian Herrera. I have a master's in public health with a concentration in epidemiology, and I work at Can Community Health in HIV/STD and hepatitis C prevention and treatment. September actually marks annual sexual health, World Sexual Health Month. It's a campaign that promotes sexual health and well-being for people around the globe, and it's a critical campaign, especially since HIV and AIDS is still an ongoing epidemic here and around the globe. Florida specifically is number two, is the second highest in the United States for new HIV diagnoses, and over 3,000 Florida youth are currently living with HIV. According to research published, published in the American Journal of Preventative Medicine, students who receive quality sex education are safer. They are more likely to delay sexual activity and use protection when they do have sex. Please support sexual, comprehensive sexual health education, and thank you for having me speak here.
Thank you. We'll now, we'll now have, we'll now have Charlotte Howard, followed by Richard Thomas, followed by Felix Proya. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Howard, and I've been a Duval resident for many years. I have three children and nine grandchildren. I've seen firsthand how much our kids need reproductive health education. It should be inclusive and supporting of all kids. Research shows a strong connection between health and academic achievement. Physical and mental health issues contribute to absenteeism and dropout. Sex ed can help. It's been shown to provide a protective factor against teen pregnancy, STDs, and the negative mental health impacts of homophobia in schools. Kids who are healthier, earn better grades, have higher graduation rates, and better attendance. Reproductive health that is inclusive and supports all kids can help students achieve academically. It can also let them know that adults are here to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Richard Thomas, followed by Felix Proya, followed by Kathleen Galliano.
Hello, my name is Richard Thomas, and I've lived in Duval for over 27 years. As a father of four daughters, ages ranging from 17 to 22, I appreciate the sex ed that Duval has provided to my girls. Having this curriculum in our schools has helped my daughters become more comfortable in talking to me about health topics. We need more sex ed, especially with our kids being bombarded with the media today through social media. Sex has become commonplace and risk-free. Much of the media that's available to our kids contains graphic and degrading images on dating and relationships. Sex ed, on the other hand, can teach a healthy relationship and how it should be. As such, I believe that parents and the schools should both provide information to help kids educate themselves on how to make good decisions for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Felix Proya, followed by Kathleen Galliano, and then followed by Alisa Barr.
Hello, thank you so much for having me to speak...
State your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Felix Proya, and I've addressed the board before as a school psychologist for this district. I truly believe that we are at the forefront of protecting the mental health of our students, and I support a comprehensive sex education. It protects students. It helps them not be susceptible to predators and also sexual dating violence, and this research supports it. So, I understand that it was needing to have community input, and I understand why it's gone to this process, and I look forward to continuing to offer my input. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now, now have Kathleen Galliano, followed by Alisa Barr, followed by Michelle Moore.
Kathleen Giuliani, veteran, and I don't play the pronoun game. In the Letter of James, in the New Testament, he says, "Not everyone should try to teach or voice an opinion. For those who do will be held to a higher standard of judgment. Leading and teaching need to be taken seriously. When you tell children they can change their sex, you are giving them misinformation. Chromosomes are not interchangeable. Puberty blockers and butchering surgery will not change your God-given sex." Schools have placed hygiene products in boys' bathrooms. They have been soaked, the machines ripped off the walls, and the products thrown on the ceiling and walls. A waste of taxpayer money, and I think an insult to young men growing up. Matthew 8:6 says, "If you harm children, it would be better for him that a millstone were hung around his neck."
Thank you. We'll now have Alisa Barr, followed by Michelle Moore, followed by Raymond Johnson III.
Hi, Alisa Barr. I'm a professor at UNF, a parent, and a partner with the Duval County Schools on the CDC Adolescent Health Grant. Since 2013 with this grant, I am the trainer for our high school teachers on this curriculum. This curriculum was selected because it is evidence-based. It's been evaluated multiple times through rigorous research and continues to show positive health outcomes. It is medically accurate and supports all of our kids. Since starting this curriculum in 2014 here in Duval, we have seen a 5% decrease documented in our data that sexual dating violence is down among 5% of our kids. We've also seen a 10% decrease in our teens ever having sex. This represents thousands of healthier teens in our county because of our curriculum. Our curriculum stresses abstinence. It is important, but we also need to be talking about a lot more. We are doing something really good here in Duval. You have a solid team of five powerhouses working on this grant. UNF faculty, United Way, Jazz Band, and our schools.
Thank you. Michelle Moore, followed by Raymond Johnson, followed by Virginia Kennedy.
Hi, my name's Michelle Moore. I've been a professor of public health for 26 years, and my expertise is adolescent health. I also have two kids who have gone to Duval County public schools. My younger is a high school student, and I too work with the CDC grant with our teachers for almost 10 years now. With, I, and I am well-trained in a number of evidence-based curriculum. There's a reason they're evidence-based. They've been studied and researched and documented to actually improve our adolescent sexual health behaviors, including improving abstinence rates and other risk-reduction behaviors. Here in Duval, we have documented a decrease in our middle school students who are having sex. We do have middle school students who are having sex, and so, it's important that they are educated. And there is overwhelming support for comprehensive sex ed. We've done those surveys in Duval, in the state of Florida, and throughout the nation, so please don't listen to the vocal minority.
Thank you. We'll now have Raymond Johnson, followed by Virginia Kennedy, followed by Conthe Doudavi. Thank you.
Raymond Johnson, Biblical Concepts Ministries here as well to oppose this, the sexual health materials. I appreciate the board pulling that. However, we will be watching what's taking place. The, this particular ETR, I understand that that is a company that is just a part of Planned Parenthood. It's another reason why I'm opposed. I have heard and reviewed lessons from these books that was coming in through this, and I'm sorry, I don't, I, I understand state law requires certain education, but I don't think middle schoolers need to be taught about anal and oral sex and so forth, things that I can't even repeat here. And so, we will certainly be watching what's moving forward. You know, this is just totally inappropriate. So, we'll, we'll be back at the future meetings, and we appreciate my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Virginia Kennedy, followed by Conthe Doudavi, followed by Katori Russell.
Hi, I'm Virginia Kennedy. I have raised three children. I have 15 grandchildren. I'm just here to say that we watch our first graders, our kindergarten through third grade. These children walk into the school system happy, emotionally well. Then, a few years later, we're seeing them walking out emotionally distraught, destroyed, confused. And there's just no reason for any of this sex education to the point where they're teaching children different ways of having sex to be done in schools. It's only teaching perversion. It's uncalled for, and it needs to stop. And that's it.
Thank you. We'll now have Conthe Doudavi and Katori Russell, followed by Minor Chamblin. And please pronounce your last name. I want to get it right.
Hello, yes, I'm Dr. Conthe Doudavi.
Thank you.
I'm a family medicine physician in Duval County. I'm also a member of Physicians for Reproductive Health. As a doctor, I urge you to keep comprehensive reproductive health in our schools. I see the consequences of inadequate sex ed every day. Last week, I saw a pregnant 12-year-old. Unfortunately, many teens are survivors of rape, and data from the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey of Duval High School students shows that 15% of our female students and 10% of our males have been forced to have sex when they did not want to. That's one in six females and one in 10 males. Studies from respected organizations such as... Studies from respected organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics have repeatedly shown that kids who receive sexual education are safer from adult predators and child abuse. This education builds sexual abuse prevention skills, raises awareness, and provides support. Also, I'd like to say that sex is normal, and sex is healthy, and I'm, thank you.
Thank you. Again, audience, as a reminder, please keep your audible responses to yourself. We're moving through these and doing a great job with it, and we really appreciate it. Katori Russell, followed by Minor Chamblin, followed by Stacy Tonaway. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katori Russell. I'm the Program Director for National Health Corps of Florida, AmeriCorps Program, under the Northeast Florida Health Start Coalition. I'm a parent of a six-year-old and two teenage boys. I previously worked in the STD field under the Florida Department of Health as well. Comprehensive health education is required. As a mom, that makes me really, really happy. Teen dating violence prevention is included in our Duval reproductive health program, as it should be. Our kids learn about healthy and unhealthy relationships, consent, and the importance of talking to parents or a trusted adult. They learn how to help friends and speak up if they witness violence. They learn about setting personal limits and respecting limits of the others. This is a quality sex ed. It's working. Teen dating violence is down 5%. It went from 14% in 2015 to 9% in 2021. In a large district like ours, 5% decrease represents thousands of kids. We, the actual parents of your district, are behind you, and we support reproductive health education in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Minor Chamblin, followed by Stacy Tonaway, followed by Erica DeAmore.
Oh, thank you for listening to me.
State your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Minor Chamblin.
Thank you.
I am a retired clinical psychologist, have been in practice for over 36 years. Also have been an educator, higher educator regarding sex education. During the time that I've been practicing as a psychologist, not surprisingly, many people who come to see me are people who have issues with their sexuality. This is especially true if you're talking about somebody who is wrestling with the LGBT kind of orientation, because they have had very little support or understanding for what it is that they're going through. Oftentimes, treatment for them is providing information, because they are terribly ignorant about their own histories. In this case, I would say that the responsibility of the schools is also to provide information, and I'm glad to know that they are able to do that with the comprehensive sex education curriculum. These days, too many young people get their information about sex online. That is a horrible source of information.
Thank you. We'll now have Stacy Tonaway, followed by Erica DeAmore, followed by Crystal Roy Palmer.
Hi, I'm Dr. Stacy Tonaway. I'm a board-certified OBGYN physician. I've been practicing here in Duval County for nearly a decade now. I see the results of people who don't have comprehensive sex education. And comprehensive means not only the schools, but also families, physicians, communities, community support, and our all the resources. And it's so important to do that. I just wanted to present, like has been said, the data is so, so clear on comprehensive sexual education. It reduces sexual activity, including delaying first intercourse. It reduces the frequency of intercourse. It reduces the number of sexual partners they have because of knowledge. It's also been shown to better protect our teens so they make better decisions by increasing condom use, increasing contraceptive use, and reducing teen pregnancy rates. This keeps our kids safe. It keeps our kids safe from predators. It keeps them safe and healthy overall. Again, I see the consequences. We need this, and I'm glad to hear that it's being evaluated, and I hope that it comes out stronger than before. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Erica DeAmore, followed by Kristy Roy Palmer, followed by Mara Macy.
Hi, I'm Erica DeAmore, and I'm here to support a comprehensive sexual class and course that includes LGBT. While many would like to further marginalize and erase LGBT, we do exist. We will continue to exist. We're not, you know, trying to indoctrinate anybody. Both my parents were all heterosexual. LGBT exists. We should be addressed. We should have courses that talk about us as well. It is very important to have LGBT, because HIV is still a thing. And the fact that I still meet people younger than me that are still getting infected by it is horrifying to me. We fought so hard to fight that, and a good comprehensive sexual education would help diminish that. So please, keep us in mind when you write your new education course. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Crystal Roy Palmer, followed by Mara Macy, followed by Belinda Casper.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Crystal.
Will you pull it down just a touch? Make sure we hear everybody. Thank you.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay.
State your name again for the record.
Yes, thank you. It's Dr. Crystal Roy Palmer. And I left Jacksonville around 2012 as a practitioner in the field of youth prevention. So I have almost 20 years of civil service toward our at-risk youth populations on both the East Coast and the West Coast of our nation. I've completed my doctorate in criminal justice and criminology a few years ago, and a lot of the work that I focus on is creating comprehensive resources and safe spaces for LGBTQ plus youth and young adults. And the research that I'm working on now focuses on learning strategies that we can utilize in teaching comprehensive resources. So if I can be of any voluntary assistance to the community or the organization creating the new curriculum, please keep me in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Mara Macy, followed by Belinda Casper, followed by Michelle Tipton.
Good evening. I'm Mara Macy. I would hope at this point you're all familiar with me, because I come here quite often. First, I want to give you an update on my son, who left LaVilla as an eighth grader last year. He is now at Bishop Kenny and happier than ever. He left LaVilla miserable every day. Every day I pick him up at Bishop Kenny, he is happy, he's smiling, and I just wanted to give you that update. I am very excited that this new curriculum is going to come into play and that we're going to be able to discuss this and work as a team to get this done. It is very important to have quality sex education, and I think that this will benefit the whole community. Last, I want to give you an update on my daughters, who have the need for an emergency injection at school, which I came here a year ago to tell you about. Haven't gotten any update, but I will let you know that there will be an update coming soon, on my end at least. And also, I wanted to, again, sing the praises of the teachers at Jacksonville Classical Academy. My kids love that school. They get into my car happy every day, smiling, just like my son now. It's a blessing. Thank you again. Have a good night.
Thank you. Belinda Casper, followed by Michelle Tipton, followed by Brian Morrell.
Hello, I'm Belinda Casper, and I applaud you for making the decision to pause and moving forward with the supplement. I think we are more alike than we are unalike. I don't think that we need to completely eliminate the sexual education. What we need to have a real review is what is the explicit nature and what is age-appropriate? I also think that we need to consider that if you are allowing the parent to opt the child out of this material, don't cause that parent to say then that this child is no longer eligible to have access to any type of health services, a Band-Aid, an availability to go to the nurse. So we need to be able to make sure that it is inclusive, so that it is appropriate, age-appropriate, and that we are absolutely allowing the review and the contribution from the community. So I applaud you for making this decision to pause, and it is a great opportunity for all of us to stay involved and to remain involved. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Michelle Tipton, followed by Brian Morrell, followed by Lori Crunden.
Good evening, Michelle Tipton. I bring you Florida Department of Education and Duval County School Board's definition of sexual harassment as verbal and nonverbal actions by adults and students that create intimidating and offensive educational environments that can cause discomfort, humiliation, or interfere with school performance. I come to you to ask you, how is it that we're protecting ourselves in an educational and a work environment and not our children? How is it okay for adults to not put our children in uncomfortable situations? We need to be protecting our youth as we do standards for ourselves for sexual harassment. I ask you to follow Broward County, utilize these types of information, and not add the supplemental or not create our own. We have what we need, and we don't need to add additional information. Thank you. And by the way, I am more than a loud person. I'm a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Brian Morrell, followed by Lori Crunden, followed by Ted Macy.
Good evening, Brian Morrell, address on file. The laws of nature and nature's God are being set aside. I'm afraid that's going to be to our great detriment, maybe even sooner rather than later. I hope not. Thank you for setting aside the ETR supplement. Had a chance to review some of those materials recently, and it's about near pornographic as you can get without it being one of those films. And to have that in front of middle schoolers, totally out of place, in my opinion. Let us allow parents to do their jobs at home in those early years. I agree that sex education is probably important, but let's, you know, later on, not at the middle school level. Maybe I'm old-school that way. I don't know. But thanks again for removing it at this time.
Thank you. We'll now have Lori Crunden, followed by Ted Macy, followed by Jim Crunden.
Good evening. My name is Lori Crunden, and thank you all for your service. I am one of those folks that has been stirring emotions. When you start talking about what's good for my children, I am going to pay close attention. I am thankful to hear that we will not be using ETR supplemental curriculum anymore. I actually read through some of that curriculum and some of the exercises, and it was disgusting. I didn't see anything healthy about it at all. I would not want my children to be exposed to any of that, of the stuff that I saw. But my 14-year-old daughter, she doesn't need to see her teacher put a condom on a seven-and-a-half-inch wooden penis. It just, I don't understand the point of that. Like, what's the end game? I do always go back to Cory Ten Boom's father, who told her that some knowledge is too heavy for children. When you're older and you're stronger, you can handle it. We are expecting our children to see the world through adult eyes, and it's just wrong.
Thank you. We'll now have Ted Macy, followed by Jim Crunden, followed by Deanna Adamson.
Good evening. My name is Ted Macy. The decision to make the health curriculum within the school board district promotes accountability to parents, and that accountability is an important factor of our kids' education. Just like our federal government uses the system of checks and balances, this too will act as a similar function. As a parent of three children in the public school system, I'm optimistic that this will promote a quality, comprehensive, and very important health education curriculum for our future generations. This gives us, parents, hope that we, as a community, as parents, teachers, and school board members, can work together to help DCPS improve for the sake of our children and the students. Having an open and reciprocal communication will continue to serve as a reminder that we are all willing to work together. And as a side note, I wish all these physicians were here to spell out statistics as well. We had over 99%, 0.9% COVID rates during school, and how important that was to our children's education at that time. If they spoke about that, it would've been good, too.
Thank you. We'll now have Jim Crunden, followed by Deanna Adamson, followed by Melissa Bernhardt.
Jim Crunden, address on file.
Can you move forward? You're not quite getting, use the microphone.
About now.
Perfect. And if we'll restart his time, because I interrupted? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you for reassessing and pulling it off the agenda for tonight, the ETR curriculum. As my wife stated a few minutes ago, some of it is just way over the top. I read something in Deuteronomy that said, "Let my teachings fall like rain, and my words descend like dew, like showers on abundant plants and new grass." I think that our teachers have gotten into this profession not for the money, but for the love of the children, and we should put them first. But some of this information, we need to push back and take a deep breath and realize we're going over the line with a lot of it. I'm praying for the districts in our area, and for the state, and our country, and the world, for the gal that got up and spoke earlier about a 12-year-old rape, issues that we've got to address, sex trafficking. I guess the big point is, a lot of us are waking up. We don't want to be emotional or loud, but we love and want to defend our children and what they're taught.
Thank you. Deanna Adamson, followed by Melissa Bernhardt, followed by Kathleen Pereira.
Hi, Deanna Adamson.
Can you move forward towards the microphone?
Hello, Deanna Adamson.
Perfect.
Thank you for tabling ETR. And I do want to say that our children should come first, as well as our teachers. And there should be age-appropriate material. And I think that right now, there's a conflict between everybody, and emotions are high, because we do care for our children, whether they're personally ours or our community's. Children should be protected. But I think there should be a, come together, figure it out, according to not just the statistics on one side, but the statistics on the other, too. Teen pregnancy has gone up, STDs has gone up. That's why we need a supplemental. If that's true, then what has been happening in the past nine years has not been working. So this will be a good time to readdress it.
Thank you. We'll now have Melissa Bernhardt, followed by Kathleen Pereira, followed by Carlos Pereira.
Hello, Melissa Bernhardt, address on file. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to everyone today. So I do understand that SHAC brought ETR curriculum to the school board. I'm looking forward to researching how I can contribute to the curriculum. I know that many members here today that spoke on different sides of the fences are all looking forward to that opportunity. I do think we will find a way to bring this education to Duval County public school kids. We all want there to be less pregnancy. We all want there to be less STDs. We all want there to be less infection of AIDS. So do you think that the education part is imperative? I do think that the ETR eighth-grade curriculum and much of the sixth-grade curriculum was just not appropriate. So I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys will bring. And I do have a question about the opt-out, the medical form that I saw online. If you want to opt out of the health curriculum, you opted out of everything.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for hopefully responses. Thank you.
Kathleen Pereira, followed by Carlos Pereira, followed by Etta Ettinger.
My name is Kathleen Pereira. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for pulling the ETRT Planned Parenthood training manuals. Any quick review that you do on the internet about late childhood and early adolescence development always addresses parents and not teachers. And the general consensus is that these unprogrammed children are merely curious about their sexuality. They do not obsess with the nitty-gritty of the how-to part of sexuality. And unfortunately, what more and more adults forget is that all children lack the maturity to understand everything about the biology and nuances of sex. Therefore, parents have a primordial right to decide what's to be done with this topic. Schools should only be responsible for teaching the biology of sex without the training manuals. Society must take back the innocence of childhood and emphasize abstinence. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Carlos Pereira, followed by Etta Ettinger, followed by Carmen Martinez.
My name is Carlos Pereira. Several people have tried to defend the curriculum that thankfully is being put in abeyance for the moment by saying that unless the curriculum is followed, well, you know, we're going to have ever more venereal disease and pregnancies out of wedlock, et cetera. But it's kind of interesting, if you look at old statistics and compare them to new statistics, in 1962, the ill-adulthood rate in this country was 5%. Nowadays, it's 40%, and that's with a lot of education about what, about safe sex. Well, you know, the only safe sex there is, is either sex within the sacrament of marriage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have Etta Ettinger, Carmen Martinez, followed by Rosalie Van Nostrum.
Etta Ettinger. Why are LGBTQ youth prone to suicide? It isn't because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather that they're placed at higher risk because they're, how they're mistreated and stigmatized in our society. And what happens in our society at large happens to our youth in schools. And what happens in our society at large happens to our youth in schools. Where do we think that young people learn to bully and ostracize LGBTQ youth? Unfortunately, in some homes, from some of our churches unfortunately, from some of our politicians unfortunately, and from what I can tell, very sadly, from some of the people maybe on our board. You may know that suicide is the second-leading cause of death among all young people aged 10 to 24, but LGBTQ youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide.
Thank you. We'll now have Carmen Martinez, followed by Rosalie Van Nostrum, followed by Wells Todd.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carmen Martinez and I am here to object to the sexualization of our children in the Duval Public Schools. The supplemental health educational materials for reproductive health and disease prevention seems like an exercise in pornography. Teaching children to be safe with a condom while having anal sex is simply disgusting and you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Anal sex is an affront against women. An abomination and should not be discussed or taught to children. They are too young to get the gist of any of this. Our local data...
Thank you. We'll now have Rosalie Van Nostrum, followed by Wells Todd, followed by Charles Kennedy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Rosalie Van Nostrum. I've missed a lot of classes apparently. I didn't hear about a lot of this stuff where I went to school. But what I want to say is, we need to teach our children to trust everyone, to treat everyone the way they wish to be treated. And I'm hoping we're not complicit in propagating hate and intolerance in our classrooms. And we need to allow our educators to mirror love and respect for all the students in the room, not just a minority or whom they see as their likeness. Our students deserve our respect and the truth. Knowledge is power and students deserve to know STDs are not gender-neutral. They need to know how they get them, how to prevent them. If you decide not to discuss sex and sex acts, they will not have the information and they will get it where they've been getting it.
Thank you.
On the internet.
We'll now have Wells Todd, followed by Charles Kennedy, followed by Pam Malarkey Robbins.
Good evening, my name is Wells Todd. For school board members to even be having a discussion about removing protections for our children is letting us all know that caring about all of our children is not an important aspect of their job. We all know that children are currently taking their own lives because of the stigma that is attached to their sexual orientation. Eliminating protections and eliminating sex education will only increase the suicide rate. The wave of right-wing fundamentalism and white supremacy must be confronted. Groups like Moms for Liberty are being funded by majority, major corporations, they are being funded by the American Legislative Exchange Council, better known as ALEC. This council is run by the Koch family. They have funded white supremacist organizations to the tune of millions of dollars.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now have Charles Kennedy, followed by Pam Malarkey Robbins, followed by Sherri Goddard.
How are y'all doing today? I'm Charles Kennedy.
Can you speak, sir, if you'll come up to the microphone?
I said, "How are y'all today?" I'm Charles Kennedy. I know y'all have a tough job.
Perfect, we can hear you now.
And I know y'all gotta listen to a lot of smack a lot of times. I have three grown children that I raised myself and 15 grandchildren that I helped raise. Not once have I had to worry about what they did with a woman or what they did with a kid at school. You know, my, my sons are my, are my daughters, are my granddaughters, because it's the parent's responsibility to teach the children these things. And if our parents are failing the children, the school can't fix that. Because the parents need to grow some, grow some and raise your children.
Sir, sir, if you'd...
Quit asking other people to raise your children. Parents are asking y'all to raise their children and to teach them things that they should be teaching them. So they're leaving them out of the dark, they don't want to, they, they have a relationship, they leave. The, the men don't want to be the father they should be, the women don't want to be the mother they should be. And so the child suffers. It comes to school and both the parents are divorced. You've got two, two parents raising two different households and the child suffers. Then he comes to school and you've got to deal with that. You've got to deal with that because the kid's messed up.
Thank you. We'll now have Pam Malarkey Robbins, followed by Sherri Goddard, followed by Scott Poole.
Good evening, my name is Pam Malarkey Robbins. I'm a former sex education health educator and counselor and been working with teenagers for 50 years and their parents. No one's, no one's arguing about sexuality education. We're arguing about what the content is. And is the content healthy and is it age-appropriate? And if you're looking for something great and you don't want to reinvent the wheel, sexual risk avoidance is, are curriculums nationwide that are proven to work, they're healthy, they don't embarrass children. Parents love sexual risk avoidance and they don't make sexuality be common and normal for teenagers. They help them understand that by postponing sex, they will reduce STDs, avoid pregnancies, all the things that we don't want our kids to have. It has nothing to do with LGBT, it has everything to do with what we teach our children. And sexual risk avoidance groups teach exactly what we want them to teach. In addition, a Barna survey recently revealed that 40% of teens say sex education makes them feel unwanted.
Thank you. Sherri Goddard, followed by Scott Poole, followed by Victoria Poole.
Good evening, my name is Sherri Goddard. I just want to say thank you for putting a pause on the ETR curriculum, but let's keep going in that direction. If you talk to someone about sex in the workplace, it is considered sexual harassment. I don't understand why it's okay to talk to children about sex in school, especially without parents being present. Also, someone on this board that's not looking at me right now is confused, so let me clarify. Loud folks that stir emotions are called parents. Parents who are very concerned about their kids being talked to about sex. I am committed to following what this board has in store about sex education and I won't go away. I want the focus for children's education to be academics, reading, writing, arithmetic, science, and history, and nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Poole, followed by Victoria Poole, followed by Dan Merke.
Good evening, my name is Scott Poole. I am a father, I'm a grandfather, I'm a son of an educator, and I have firsthand knowledge of what teachers go through in dealing with students and dealing with parents. First thing I want to do is I want to thank the superintendent for pulling this off the agenda. As a true leader, our job is to be a builder of consensus and that's what this process hopefully will do. But to do this, we have to have parental involvement, we have to have a parental voice to come up with an age-appropriate curriculum that has an effective approach to this topic without isolating people, making kids uncomfortable, and potentially making the problem worse. Trust is imperative in this situation, but trust is not blind and trust goes both ways. It's been stated that we as the silent vocal minority, we're not really silent, we're not really the minority, and we sure aren't going away, but we want to be part of this process. So I would urge engagement of parents to get the input of, hey, what do we want when we hand our kids off to the teachers?
Thank you. Victoria Poole, followed by Dan Merke, and then followed by Pat Villa.
I'm Victoria Poole and I thank you for allowing us to talk. Our, I am also a member of CCDF, County Citizens of Defending Freedom, and I want to thank the superintendent for pausing the current curriculum. I agree that the current sex education is grossly explicit, actually, it's downright disgusting and is stealing the innocence of our middle schoolers. This is a gross, explicit curriculum and this is not age-appropriate, nor is this about LGBT community, AIDS, HIV, teen pregnancy, or sex trafficking. This is about graphic sex with inappropriate ages. This is actually pornification of our middle schools. I am for a good, age-appropriate sex education curriculum, not something that belongs behind a subscription on HBO called "How to Build a Sex Room."
Thank you. We'll have Victoria Poole, followed by Dan Merke, followed by Pat Villa. Oh, Victoria Poole, sorry. Dan Merke, followed by Pat Villa, followed by Margaret Yarborough. All right.
It's Dan Merken. Thank you for letting me address the board. I'm a member of three planning bodies and have been for over 20 years. These are HIV prevention planning bodies. I can tell you that as a community and as a state, it's critical that we have a school system that is a partner in preventing the transmission of STI and HIV. And the way they are a partner is by providing accurate educational materials to the young people they serve. There is no way for small organizations like the one I work for to reach 100,000-plus students. Only a school system can do that. So it's critical that you engage with accurate information and that's age-appropriate, but also explicit enough so that those who are engaging those activities can protect themselves. Additionally, just a point of order, it was the board action last month that voted to put this on the agenda for this meeting. So it really wasn't the prerogative of the superintendent to pull it.
Thank you. Pat Villa, followed by Margaret Yarborough, followed by Christine Hall.
Hi, I'm Pat Villa and I have a bachelor's degree in science in nursing. And so I understand everything about biology of a man and a woman. And the health curriculum should be based on the developmental process of men, women, our, you know, boys and girls as they're growing, proper eating, exercise. The comprehensive education that's being said with the LGBTQ, that's a gender dysphoria, it's a mental health disorder. If they're worrying about bullying and suicide, they need mental health. That's part of why you would go to a mental health doctor, because you have those issues. And sex trafficking, that's the law, that's for the law enforcement to handle. It's the border issues and it's not Jacksonville School, School to handle, it's for law enforcement. So clarifying sex trafficking is not part of the school board's problem.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now have Margaret Yarborough, followed by Christina Hall, followed by Pascal Alcindor.
Hi, my name is Margaret Yarborough and thank you for tabling the ETR curriculum. It contained very inappropriate materials. Contrary to what the health director said last month, this curriculum is not required according to the Florida statute 1003.42, section 2N. Glencoe Teen Health textbook already meets the requirements. And so I want to know, why can't parents opt in to receive supplemental health information instead of opting out? I agree that we should look at other county statistics to see whether supplemental curriculum is even needed. Local FBI stated that second-to-smartphones, school-issued laptops are the biggest risk to sex trafficking. So I feel a greater emphasis should be placed on ensuring protections are in place on school-issued devices. And also, I recently learned after speaking with the Douglas Anderson principal, that in my kids' schools, biological boys are allowed in girls' bathrooms and vice versa, and also at LaVilla. Why weren't parents notified about this? This, I don't, I just don't understand how this is even allowed. It's a safety and privacy issue and it needs to stop immediately.
Thank you. Christina Hall, followed by Pascal Alcindor, followed by Daniel Henry.
Good evening, I'm Christine Hall. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
He looked carefully to see which was the outside and started to roll it down. He rolled the condom halfway down his penis and thought, "Great, I'm ready." As Herman and Kiva started to have sex, he felt the condom slipping off. Herman threw that one away and got another one and put it all the way to the base of his penis. This is just one small part of one story in the supplemental health curriculum that's been used for the last nine years. I know that you aren't voting on it tonight, but ultimately, my hope is that you would vote no or not create something that has graphic stories like this under the facade of instructional lessons. Stories are meant to elicit emotions and sensations and they're meant to cultivate the imagination. And honestly, that is why erotic novels exist in the first place and why they're so popular. Because that's what they do, they, they bring about sensation.
Thank you. We'll now have Pascal Alcindor, followed by Daniel Henry, followed by Maria Mark.
Good evening, my name is Pascal Alcindor. And I'm here as a parent of three young people, 12 to 17 years old. And I'm also a person who's taught and been involved with adolescent health for over 20 years. I'm really concerned about what I'm hearing today because to me, we're forgetting about young people for the most part in some of the commentary. I got involved in sexual health education as a science teacher who saw the need, as a math teacher out of area who saw the need. And I don't understand why we don't see the need. There's a tremendous need for information for young people. They need the information to make healthy choices. I watch young people in my classrooms carrying young, other children, carrying two-year-olds, carrying three-year-olds, trying to make it through high school to be able to go to college. Brilliant young people. I know that there's concern about the curriculum, I know that there are concerns about what it entails for young people and for the, the community, but I want you to think about young people first when making those decisions. I've worked with many school districts.
Thank you.
And if you put young people first, the decision should be clear.
We'll now have Daniel Henry, followed by Maria Mark, followed by McCallden Arison.
My name is Daniel Henry and my address is on file. Proud graduate of Baldwin Middle Senior High and a Philip Randolph Academy of Technology. One of the things I wanted to say is, I hope when the school district goes back to the board with a proposal that deals with sexual education, that it truly doesn't wash away some of the important information that is within the guide. This is something that the school board has been using for over years and years and years. And if, for many of the people that are here, if it was up to my parents to teach me about special education, I would've never gotten it because they weren't comfortable with the conversation. So I think it's why it's important for us to be able to create a policy that is useful for the overwhelming majority of the students that are in our school district and not diffuse about some people's morality in terms of how they view the topic. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Maria Mark, and it's actually Michael Anderson is what it looks like, I apologize for the mispronunciation just a moment ago. Jessica Wilson, after that.
Good evening, Maria Mark. This is not about stickers, this is about discrimination and exclusion and a governor who's waged war using our children as pawns under the guise of the bill known as the Parental Rights in Education Act. What specific rights have been lost that causes such draconian acts of putting the lives and livelihood of our children in jeopardy and sometimes in life-threatening situations? What about the rights of the parents of the LGBTQ children who send their children to our public schools to be educated and become productive citizens? Where are their rights in education? Why are they and their children being targeted by the governor and this bill? School board members, I challenge you to explain how these actions support your vision, which says to ensure every student is inspired and prepared for success in college, in a career, and life. I challenge you to explain how these actions support your mission to provide educational excellence for every student, every day. I challenge you to explain how these actions support your promise. In part, we intentionally focus on student achievement, safety, and well-being. We foster...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Michael Anderson, followed by Jessica Wilson, followed by Vanessa Collins-Hopkins.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Anderson, address on file. I, I believe this, this curriculum should, should not, not have been pulled tonight. We should've had, had the vote tonight and basically let, 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 let basically our school board actually vote and, and we actually see who's, who, 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 who is on, on the actual record, supporting or, 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 or not, not supporting our schools and, and our students. Also, as a special education teacher right now, I, I, I have a great, great concerns for, for, for our students over at, 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 at the school, school that I'm at. No AC.
Thank you.
No laptops working.
Thank you.
And again, health, health concerns.
Thank you. We'll now have Jessica Wilson, followed by Vanessa Collins-Hopkins. We'll now have Jessica Wilson, followed by Vanessa Collins-Hopkins, followed by Daniela Nina Perez.
My name is Jessica Wilson. I am here as a mother, a grandmother, and a member of Jacksonville Now. I'm here in support of comprehensive, inclusive education, sex education. LGBTQ kids exist, and no amount of curriculum restriction is going to change that. Best estimates suggest that between 7% to 9% of youth identify as queer. As such, rainbow safe space stickers need to remain in classrooms and administrative offices. My son came out as gender non-conforming in sixth grade, 12 years old. I should point out that some of his peers were already having sex and probably would have benefited from seeing a demonstration of condom application. My son had been struggling with his mental health for over a year, including suicidal ideation and two inpatient hospitalizations. He trusted his school guidance counselor months before he felt comfortable coming to me. If his school had not been a safe space, he would not have survived through high school. I now have a granddaughter who also has two dads, and she should be comfortable discussing her family.
Thank you. We'll now have Vanessa Collins-Hopkins, followed by Nina Perez, followed by Sandra Bond.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Collins-Hopkins. I'm a proud proponent of medically accurate sex education for our youth. I'm also a proud proponent of LGBTQ issues. I graduated from Jean Reubolt High School. I then went to Spelman College. And then after that, went to Johns Hopkins Medical School. I want to say to you that there's nothing more important than having medically accurate, comprehensive sex education in our public schools. I'll also mention that I was VP for Medical Affairs for Planned Parenthood Federation of America from 2001 until 2011, and then after that, VP for External Medical Affairs. I will volunteer and do anything you want.
Thank you. We'll now have Nina Perez, followed by Sandra Bond, followed by Karen Olson.
Good evening. I am Nina Perez, a Duval County mom from District 6, and a director at MomsRising.org. MomsRising is a grassroots organization of more than a million moms and families, including thousands in Florida and hundreds in Duval County. MomsRising addresses the most critical issues facing mothers, and one of the most pressing concerns from our local families are the attempts from the extreme right-wing vocal minority to politicize education in an effort to attack public schools and compromise the health and well-being of students. Families don't want health education to become the next political football in the culture wars being forced on our schools. We urge the school board to protect, protect and quickly move comprehensive health education standards. The vast majority of families tell us they want their kids to have unbiased information and feel safe and welcome at school. It means trusting our educators and mental health professional, professionals who've dedicated their lives to our public schools and students, and to create welcoming schools for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Sandra Bond, followed by Karen Olson, followed by Cindy Watson.
Sandra Bond, 79 years old.
Ma'am, can you pull the microphone closer to you? Or get a little closer, we want to be able to hear.
I'm 79 years old.
And will you state your name one more time?
Sandra Bond, B-O-N-D.
Hold on one second. Will those up there make sure that she gets her full time? Because I interrupted to make sure we could hear her speak. Now go. Thank you.
I have three children, two stepsons, and five grandchildren. My oldest stepson is gay. He has been with his partner 30 years. My cousin committed suicide at 55 years old, having AIDS, and his father never accepted him. I know this isn't all about the gay issue, but I think it's important that it be covered at a young age, because my aunt said she knew her son was gay at three. My, I have another friend whose child she knew was gay at three. I think it's putting your head in the sand to think this subject can be postponed until a later age. I don't know about the graphic things. I have not seen the pictures, but I think a proper sex education at a young age is important. My parents never mentioned it to me. I don't know how many do.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now have, I was looking for Karen Olson, but I'm not seeing Karen Olson. So I'm going to move to Cindy Watson, followed by Charle, Chanley Dudley, followed by Harriet Vasquez.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Watson. I'm the CEO of Jasmine. Thank you all for your service to young people in this community. In my work at Jasmine for the past 28 years, I've known so many young people, LGBTQ young people who are tormented by bullying and harassment in their schools. In school-based surveys since 2013, LGBT students have reported being bullied and teased at twice the rate of their heterosexual peers. The impact of this is teen depression and suicide, and LGBT students experience these issues at up to three times the rate of their heterosexual peers. To protect all students and reduce the harm for LGBT students, our schools have to provide clear policies to address anti-LGBTQ messages and language across the system. Openly promoting safe space for students with rainbows and affirming posters and lessons is essential. Standing by teachers as beacon of support is life-saving. Comprehensive sex ed curriculum that includes LGBT students is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Chanley Dudley, followed by Harriet Vasquary, followed by Darlene Miller.
My name is Dr. Chanley Dudley. I'm a pediatrician in Jacksonville native. I speak on behalf of the pediatric medical community in Jasmine, where I serve, as a member of their board. My colleagues and I are opposed to DCPS removing LGBTQ-inclusive materials, support guides, and sexual health education from the public school system. The pressure our youth face today is greater now than ever. Mental health services are overwhelmed. The numbers of children cutting their bodies and threatening or completing suicide is increasing, and resources available to help these struggling children are dwindling. This is especially true for gender-fluid youth. LGBTQ kids are at higher risk for depression, anxiety, bullying, homelessness, and suicide. Taking away their visibility is dangerous. Do not make the process of growing up harder for LGBTQ children. If you cancel LGBTQ-inclusive sex education and materials, you leave multitudes of creative, kind, and vulnerable children at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Harriet Vasquary, followed by Darlene Miller, followed by Amelia Norman. You'll state your name to the record. I'm afraid I got the last name wrong.
Sure. My name's Harriet Vasquez, and I just want to say that for the past 10 years, you've been using a curriculum, and obviously, it's not working. It's not working. And when you want to role-play with children, sex in schools, that's inappropriate. You want to bring your abortion rallies and whatever to our schools? I stand with these other people out here who want to get rid of the white supremacy ETR books. Thank you. Thank you for getting rid of white supremacy. And hey, by the way, I think the voters have shown you guys, we're not the minority. We're actually the majority. Thank you.
We'll now have Darlene Miller, followed by Amelia Norman, followed by Mary Lynn McDavid.
Good evening. I am Darlene Miller. I think the word I am searching for in my brain here is kind of differentiation. Differentiation is where you take a curriculum and you break it apart for different levels of different children, right? Well, as I sit here, I hear a lot of age-appropriate. You know, there's really a difference between an IQ, an age, a physical age, and your EQ. An EQ is an emotional intelligence. I had a son who had an IQ here, a physical age here, and an EQ way down here. And what you would call your comprehensive sex education was totally not appropriate for him. Nobody's asking you to get rid of it. Nobody's asking you to do it for everybody. But there has to be some kind of opt-out, because the parents do know their children, and I do know mine, and I knew exactly what his emotional age was. And you ask us to trust teachers. Well, there's a lot of teachers I trust, but I don't trust a health teacher that says his doctor's an idiot either.
Thank you. We'll now have Amelia Norman, followed by Mary Lynn McDavid, followed by Cole Gabriel.
Okay. Hi, my name's Amelia. I'm a registered nurse. My purpose in life is to reduce...
Ma'am, will you state your full name for the record?
Amelia, my name is Amelia Norman. I'm a registered nurse. My purpose in life is to reduce suffering. I want to emphasize the importance of safe space identification and signage or materials to help students know it's okay to be who they are. I am a trans woman. I knew I was different since I was four years old. I grew up in a home where I couldn't be myself. Many of us don't have safe places, even in our homes. Some of the speakers here show you the kind of judgment we face. We're hated for existing, openly judged and deemed freaks, or mentally ill by people who don't even know us. Let these people show you exactly why affirming signage and safe place placards are needed. We must let our school-aged kids know who, who are different, know that they're valid in the eyes of their educators. They're not abominations or freaks. They're just as valued as anyone else. They can contribute the same. Thanks.
Thank you. I've called for Mary Lynn McDavid, Cole Gabriel. Mr. Gabriel, if you want to come on up. Looks like you're here. And then Tim Miller.
Good evening, members of the school board. It's a pleasure. My name is Cole Gabriel, and I am here to present these simple facts. Schools that preach abstinence-only education have higher rates of STDs and teen pregnancy. Fact. Schools that ban discussions on LGBT issues have higher rates of teen suicide. Fact. Employers that prevent employees from coming to their job authentically have higher rates of turnover and vacancies. Fact. I urge our school board to expediently provide comprehensive guidance on sex education, including LGBT issues. No student deserves to feel like an outcast throughout their young life simply because they have feelings for someone of the same gender, or they don't feel right in their own skin. And no student deserves to get an STD or get pregnant simply because they never got the message. Like we said in Schoolhouse Rock, knowledge is power. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Tim Miller, followed by Jenny Richards, followed by Katie McNeil.
Good evening, my name's Tim Miller. Completely different topic. When my ESC child was in high school, he got a referral for raising his voice in class. And all of a sudden, we're in a meeting with 20 district personnel, trying to move him to a different school. Had dinner with some teachers the other day, and they said that they're getting hit in class. They're writing referrals, and they're getting downgraded to nothing, because, well, they didn't, they didn't have a normal gear the last couple of years. We've got to support the teachers. And we have to support the teachers. I've told these teachers that if this is happening, what you need to do is, one, you need to write the referral that matches the code of conduct exactly. And if it gets downcoded, you need to call JSO, because it's battery. And then you need to call the state, because this is a problem. And it's happening over and over. I've had multiple teachers tell me this. We have to support the teachers. This is why teachers are leaving.
Thank you. We'll now have Jenny Richards, followed by Katie McNeil, followed by John Hatle. Hat, Hatley, sorry. There.
Hi, I'm Jenny Richards. I'm a resident. I've been for 35 years here in Jacksonville, and I'm a board member of Jasmine, and I am a business owner. And I wanted to voice my support for comprehensive sex education. And I wanted to thank you guys for being here and for listening to the public, because I know that's very important, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now have Katie McNeil, followed by Jane Hatley, followed by Sharman Smith.
Katie McNeil, every dollar spent by any government entity must first be taken by force from the person who earned it. And frankly, there's not enough reverence by those in the government sector for the money they spend, the money that was earned by someone else. I don't see it in this board, that appreciation from where the money you spend comes from. Every time you decide to spend a dollar, you're saying, I believe I know better how to spend this dollar than the person who earned it. There's an agenda item today for approving $16,000 in travel expenses for a Chamber of Commerce event. One of the members who is meant to go to this trip didn't win reelection, so whatever benefit might come from this event, of which I'm skeptical there is any, is wasted. It's easy to say, what's $16,000? It's a drop in the bucket when compared to the $2.6 billion annual budget this school board oversees. There's nothing easier than spending someone else's money on something for other people. You're not incentivized to ensure value, return on investment, or even need. The next shiny object always seems necessary when it's someone else's money, and you can pressure the community to raise their neighbor's sales tax or property taxes. Thank you.
We'll now have John Hatley, followed by Sharman Smith, followed by Ivy Sutter.
Good evening. I'm John Hatley, and I'm here to support sex education. And I just want to point out that this is a public education that we're talking about. This is Duval Public Schools. And in that situation, the needs of the many always outweigh the desires of the few. The experts that have spoken tonight have pointed out that comprehensive sex education improves community health. And that's, that should be the main goal here. And for those that feel that the materials presented are not appropriate for their children, there are, as I'll echo as other people have said, parent choices available to opt-out of sex education. And also, they could homeschool, so they have options to, to not, not expose their children's, children to those materials if they don't wish to. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Sharman Smith, followed by Ivy Sutter, followed by Blake Harper.
Hello. My name is Sharman Smith. I'm the Democratic nominee for Senate District 4 here in northeast Florida. As a military spouse, I've had the privilege of educating my children in multiple states across the nation. I put my first child into school in Duval County School Systems in 2001, and my youngest is a senior right now. And I can tell you, it was a lot easier to put kids through school a decade ago than it is right now. And I want to thank all of you for your participation and caring for our kids, because it's a tough journey, and it's not going to get any easier going forward. Now, I can tell you from personal experience, sheltering my children in elementary school did me no favors when I brought them to Duval County to go to middle school. And what they brought to me and the stories they told me when they came home from school were a lot wilder than the samples of the education that has been provided here tonight. And I look forward to seeing the curriculum that's going to be produced and see how it stacks up against what I've seen in other states. As a parent in Duval County, we have been embarrassed in other states by the lack of education that we've received here in Duval County.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now have Ivy Sutter, followed by Blake Harper.
Good evening. My name is Ivy Suter, and I'm a member of Moms for Liberty, and I speak for myself tonight. Thank you for tabling the non-state-approved supplemental health curriculum with explicitly sexual content. Your results on sex education, as referenced by Board Member Jones, have clearly failed, so it makes no sense for this curriculum to continue. And thinking students will be at risk without this curriculum is ludicrous. So again, thank you for tabling it, and I await the new material for a quality and appropriate program. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. We'll now have Blake Harper.
My name is Blake Harper. Information on file. Recalling that Governor DeSantis held accountable the school board members who were responsible for Parkland, the Parkland massacre. I'm glad that the superintendent here recognized that there are significant legal risks with teaching middle schoolers how to put a condom on a seven-and-a-half-inch dildo. That's absolutely disgusting. And I've got to imagine, at some point in time, that violates every sense of, of right and law. And I'm glad that you, I'm glad you've removed that, so you remove your, your, your school board members from that threat. I want to go to something else. We were met tonight by a school board member going off on a rant. She went off on a rant about a small group of people loud. Well, I'm a big man, and I'm loud. And I'll tell you why I'm loud. A lot of us are loud, because we've given you our trust for many years, and you violated it. You've repeatedly shown that you're not honest, not trustful. Finally, this is the same person who used a racist comment about two black...
Sir, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. We now, that concludes our speakers for this evening, but we do have 24 cards that waved. We now, that concludes our speakers for this evening, but we do have 24 cards that waived their opportunity to speak, but we do want to record them for record. Mary Riley waived in opposition of ERT. Lori Stratton waived in opposition of ETR. Betla Limbaugh waived in opposition of ETR. Paul Clark waived, opposes supplemental curriculum. Patricia Kreveling waived opposition of supplemental health curriculum, ETR. Jeff Arneson waived, and, wait, supports denying supplemental health, ETR. Jimmy Midyette waived opportunity to speak, there was not an agenda item. Patricia Wojewski waived supplemental sex education material was her topic. Gloria Einstein, support of supplemental sex education curriculum. Matt Funnel, opposition, ETR supplemental education. Julie Grossman, opposition, it does not have a topic item there. Dorothy Nuttont, support sex ed in schools. Trinity Baker, support comprehensive sex education and inclusive curriculum. Mason Mannion did not, just in support of comprehensive sex ed. Heather Baldwin, support focus on academic excellence. Kristi Kearns, support healthcare compulsive sex ed. Cynthia Cooney did not note what they were supporting or opposing. Patricia, Pamela Henry, sex education, opposition to this curriculum. Carrie Andrian, opposition to sex education curriculum. Angela Reinbach, support not moving forward with supplemental curriculum. Christina Mara, support comprehensive sex ed, LGBTQT support and CRT. Amanda Rigel, support LGBTQT support and comprehensive health education. Beverly Banta, and did not waive in support or opposition and did not list an agenda item, just opposed supplemental health curriculum. Rebecca Bowie, oppose approving the non-approved supplemental health curriculum. That concludes our speaker cards. I do want to make a comment to our audience, thank you for bearing with us, we had a lot of speakers this evening, and I appreciate the fact that you worked with us to get all of those through so that we could hear everybody's thoughts on these items.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to comments from parent organizations, District Parent Teacher Association, District Advisory Council. Do we have any of the following people or groups? Michael Hawke from District Advisory, Kay Hawkins, PTA, Vascal Eagle, Title I, Aaron Hutchinson, Exceptional Student Education. Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from designated employee organizations. The below organizations are invited to come. Terry Brady, Elton Brown, Jason Geiger, Ronnie Burris, David Bryan or Steve Zona, any of those individuals here? Seeing none, we'll go on to approval of minutes. The Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. August 2nd, 2022, regular board meeting. August 9th, 2022, board workshop. August 16th, 2022, board workshop. August 16th, 2022, agenda committee meeting. August 16th, 2022, special board meeting. August 25th, 2022, board workshop, item added. September 8th, 2022, special board meeting, budget approval of final millage and final budget, item added. September 8th, 2022, special board meeting, item added. Ask for motion?
Second.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, second by Board Member Hershey. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, go ahead and I'll call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item 7-0. Now moving on to approval of consent agenda, are there any items to be placed on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Hearing, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, second by Vice Chair Coker. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, call for your vote? By your action, you have approved the consent agenda 7-0. Now moving on to items for discussion. The first item, school choice and pupil assignment. Dr. Green, I'll have you actually read the recommendation.
That the Duval County School Board approved the charter contract consolidating San Jose Prep and San Jose Primary to San Jose Prep, and that the Duval County School Board authorized the chairperson or the vice chairman and the superintendent to execute the contract upon form approval by the Office of General Counsel.
Thank you. Ask for a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Coker. Any second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Joyce. We'll call on Board Member Hershey, who pulled the item first, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Board Member Hershey?
Thank you. I pulled this because, as I mentioned at our workshop or agenda review, that accountability for traditional public schools is greater than that for charter schools, particularly when it comes to student achievement. Currently, in Duval County, there are more underperforming charter schools than traditional schools, and it is time to have greater accountability for charter schools when it pertains to school grades. This is why I'll be voting no on this item. I understand that this is likely to pass. Nonetheless, I believe it's time for accountability with charter schools, and for the record, I would just like to say I did have a one-on-one in-person meeting with Dr. Hall.
Thank you. Board Member Pearson?
Yes. San Jose Prep and San Jose Primary are charter schools in District 3, and I did meet with Dr. Hall about this and had a discussion with him about it. What this comes down to for me is that San Jose Primary has a grade of D, and if these two schools were to merge, the D would not be visible to parents who would be looking for, say, shopping within the school choice realm this next school year. And so I expressed to Dr. Hall my great appreciation for the work that they do at San Jose Prep and Primary. I attended their graduation this year and go when I'm invited to their school when I can. I also expressed my confidence that they will be able to get this grade up to a C or better, but I let him know that I would be voting against this because I can't vote to hide a D grade. However, if these, both of these schools were a C, I would be happy to vote for it.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. Other comments, thoughts? Board Member Joyce?
So yes, through the chair, to Dr. Green or Mr. Poole, if the board votes not to approve this, could there be any litigation from the state, or could the San Jose Charter School appeal this, and could it end up costing the district tax dollars?
Through the chair to, excuse me, Board Member Joyce, there can always say, there can always be litigation. Could there be litigation that could result in cost? Absolutely. Is there anything upon which that would be grounded that I'm aware of? No. So there's nothing that I've seen or that I'm aware of that would require this board to permit the consolidation of the schools.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Coker?
Through the chair to either Dr. Green or to Mr. Poole, I know that our authority in this area is fairly limited due to state statute and such. My question is, has any district ever taken a stance against something like this, and do we know the outcome? Is it ultimately reversed at the state level or not? Where does our legal authority start and end in this moment?
Through the chair, I'm going to give a response based on district, and Mr. Poole can come behind me on the legal. Any decision that the board makes on a charter, they do have an opportunity to appeal that decision, and that would go to DOE. Whether that appeal would go through their charter committee or through DOA, that's where Mr. Poole needs to answer that question. We have seen other districts that have voted down whether a charter remains open, and they've chosen to vote to close that charter. Those charter schools have had the opportunity to appeal. Some have won and some have not, but as a district, we would have to be prepared to go to DOE and answer that appeal.
And through the chair, I'm not aware of any instance where that's happened. In fact, I was looking as we spoke to see if I can find anything where that's taken place. I'm not aware of any cases where that has taken place. And I would differentiate or distinguish between situations in which we are denying a request to grant a charter to a proposed school, or conversely, where we're moving to take over a school because of financial problems or what have you, with a decision as to whether or not merely to allow two schools that already have a charter to combine into one. I'm just, I'm not aware of anything that mandates us to permit that. Having said that, you know, if, I can't state that I've done exhaustive research on that, because I haven't. And so if it's the will of the board, I'd be happy to take a look at that more closely before a decision is made and give you a more definitive answer.
Thank you for that information. Other thoughts or comments? Board Member Jones?
Sure. Thank you, through the chair, Dr. Green. The reason the school would receive a C grade is because the majority of students are in the school that's graded a C, is that correct?
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, I do not believe they have the same rules that a traditional school. When we consolidate traditional schools, it is based on which school has the higher number of students. So let's just take the consolidation that we're doing with Henry Kite, Martin Luther King, and Rutledge Pearson. We haven't been given a final answer from the Department of Education, but we believe it is the school with the largest number of students, that whatever that grade is. But another example would be when we combined what is now known as Northwestern Legends Elementary. We combined Carter G. Woodson Elementary and St. Clair Evans Elementary, and at the time, St. Clair Evans had the most students, therefore it took the grade of St. Clair Evans. If Carter G. Woodson had the majority of the students, then we would have had to take that school grade of Carter G. Woodson. So every consolidation we've done in the district with traditional schools, it's been based on which school has the largest, larger or largest number of students, and that is the grade the school takes. In charter, I do not believe it is based on number of students, because technically, it is, they are saying this is the same organization. So technically, they're saying this is the same school, and that is why you can combine and put the two schools together and not, it doesn't matter, it's just the better of the school grade.
Yeah, I, in that case, it's, I'm going to have to vote no also. I think transparency is very important. As parents look to find a school for his child, they need to be clear on what that school grade is, and I think we're just adding to the confusion. So I would not be voting for it either. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Mr. Poole, you have some additional information?
Through the chair, Section 1,002.33 Florida statutes deals with charter schools, subpart, let's see, it's quite lengthy, but it is a subpart D, but I'll have to find the larger part, but, and I'll read this. "A request for consolidation of multiple charters must be approved or denied within 60 days after the submission of the request. If the request is denied, the sponsor shall notify the charter school's governing board of the denial and provide the specific reasons in reasonable detail for the denial of the request for consolidation within 10 days." That certainly suggests to me that we have the discretion to deny, but simply we will be required to provide an explanation or reason for the denial.
Thank you for that, Mr. Poole. Vice Chair Coker?
Through the chair, back to Mr. Poole, if we, if the denial were to be done, and what is their recourse after we notify them? And where do we ultimately end up in terms of who's making?
I think, and through the chair, this would involve a matter impacting substantial interests under Chapter 120. So there would be a right to a Chapter 120 hearing before the Division of Administrative Hearings, which ultimately would lead to a recommended order that comes back to the board for consideration for approval, rejection, or modification.
Through the chair, and again to Mr. Poole, we're not aware of any other time this has been done in any other district to know what usually the outcome of these scenarios are, and we've not researched it. We don't know that it has or hasn't occurred.
That, through the chairs, that's correct.
So we don't know cost as to if we were to do this, what we would be looking for?
At a minimum, I'm thinking in terms of cost to the district for attorney's fees and dealing with that through the DOA proceeding. There absolutely would be cost for that.
Thank you. Board Member Pearson?
Perhaps this is an oversimplification, but I feel like either school grades are important or they're not important. So, yeah, I'm just going to leave there. Either school grades are important or they're not important, and it doesn't matter whether you're a charter school, a traditional school, or a magnet school. If the state is going to attach some weight and for our side penalty to low school grades, then I don't really understand why a school grade is not important for all schools.
Quick, Board Member Hershey?
The only thing I was going to add is, this is not causing the charter school either of them to cease. We are not, to me, it would be a different conversation if we were closing them or trying to do something. This is, are we going to approve or deny their ability to consolidate and take a higher school grade? My concern is that there is so much accountability, since I've been on the board and Board Member Jones has been on the board, we have gone through turnaround schools, and to Dr. Green's credit and her leadership team, we have gotten out of all of those turnaround schools. Is that, I mean, we've closed the gap-
Currently, we do not have any schools in turnaround.
Which is huge, that has happened over the past six years, and the accountability for this district was high scrutiny, and I remember that. And so, to me, I'm just going to say it again, I believe accountability starts here, and that is why I pulled this item, and that is why I will not be voting for it.
Really quick for clarification, Board Member Pearson, you mentioned these schools are in your district, but Board Member Hershey, you have some interest in this. Can you talk about the geography and the connection with those two things for the public?
Well, so their physical office, they also have a virtual school, and that office is housed in my district, but San Jose Boulevard, you can split hairs over. As to, so it is, you know, a stone's throw from my district. Again, a charter school is something we serve as the board that approves or denies mergers and opening and closing of charter schools, and I will say that Dr. Hall reached out to me, I did it- And I will say that Dr. Hall reached out to me. I did attend their virtual school graduation this summer. Dr. Green gave the, the address at, at that. So, and I know that they have other schools that they're working on in the district. I am supportive of their efforts. I am not supportive, and he said to me, it's the school grade. And I told him, yes. So that is my, it comes down to accountability and the work that this district has done to turn schools around. The pressure we were under to make those decisions, particularly in 2017. And again, it just comes down to the school grade. If this had been a, if there were both two Cs or being a C, I'd be in a different place. But because of the school grade and the schools that are around that, there's probably, we've counted, maybe there are about over a half dozen schools in that radius that are public schools that are higher performing.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other further comments? Is that a hand? All right, if there are no further comments, we'll go ahead and I will call for your vote. By your, by your action, you have rejected this item one to six. Thank you. Moving on to Board Member Travel, that the Duval County School Board approved and confirmed the travel listed below for official business of the district, that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. October 5th through 7th, 2022, Crystal River, Florida, 2022 Board of Directors Leadership Development Training and Meeting, Pearson and Anderson. October 10th through 12th, 2022, Nashville, Tennessee, Jack's Chamber, 2022 Leadership Trip, Coker. October 19th, 2023, October 19th through the 23rd, 2022, Orlando, Florida, Council of Great City Schools, 66th Annual Fall Conference. Anderson, Coker, Hershey, Jones, Willie. And November 16th, Salt Lake City, Utah, Excel National Summit on Education has been stricken. And also has been stricken was October 10th, 2022, Nashville, Tennessee, Jack's Chamber Trip. Stricken was Anderson, Pearson, and Willie. All right, is that clear? Did I read that clearly? Okay. All right, are there, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Come forward. As you come, state your name for the record and then speak to this particular item. Board Travel.
Chairman, please state how much time they have.
It'll be quick.
You can do three minutes.
I needed three minutes on the other one. I'm Pat Villa. I'm not sure I understood about the, the Tennessee trip. Did you say it's been stricken off? You're not gonna do it?
Yeah, the only person attending that is Coker.
So the four original people are not going, just the one person?
That is correct.
And is that cost $4,000 for that person? Cause it was, it was $16,000 for four people, so that would mean a total of $4,000 per person. So would that mean it's $4,000 for one person?
I'm not sure what the exact number would be. We.
I'm just wondering how a trip to Tennessee for
That is correct.
Two days and three night, no, two nights and three days is $4,000. Are they flying first class? Just question, I mean, it doesn't make sense. $4,000 for a trip to Tennessee? Who's, and who's paying for it? I don't know, am I allowed to even ask that question? I don't know.
Can we respond?
You can ask, but this is not a discussion. It's just a public, we'll discuss, we can discuss after you.
So, so basically it was gonna be four people, $16,000, $4,000 apiece for a two-day, two-night, three-day trip to Tennessee. And it was gonna volle up a, a, a board member that is no longer gonna be on the board. So, and now it's just one person. So I'm just wondering where $4,000 for each person came from. I mean, I just took a trip out to Wyoming and it was much less than that. So anyways, just if that's, if you can clarify that somewhere where that, how much that trip is gonna cost for that one person, because it was gonna be $4,000 for four, $16,000 for four people. Is that it? I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, to her note, I think it would be good for you guys to provide us with an itemized report that would kind of explicitly explain where those funds are going and how they're being utilized. Also, I think it's important too that you guys be using tax dollars fiscally responsibly. I know that you guys have a scathing report about your public safety and that included issues of financial irresponsibility. And so I think it's very important that you guys are recognizing that and understanding what's coming down the pipeline and that you're making sure that you're making fiscally responsible decisions with our money. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm also commenting on the travel expenses that are being spent. I'm wondering what the historical precedence is if a board member is leaving within a 60-day time period. Are they historically removed from leadership events? The amount of money that's being spent for board members for education or representation when they are leaving the board seems irresponsible to me as a taxpayer. And I really would like to see how that's addressed. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on board travel? All right, now we'll move on to further discussion from the board. Board Member Hershey.
Yes, the one travel that was mentioned with the, to Nashville, I will say that is with the chamber. And typically there is, are one or more city council members who attend that trip. And this, a representative from the school board has been asked to attend that chamber trip as well as there will be city leaders attending that. It has been in the past an annual trip, the board has not participated, I think, in two or three years in that, in that travel. And so that's why that has come up. So I just would like to share that that particular trip is through the chamber and city council members will be attending. And one representative from the school board, it is my understanding when I was in the board office today, was asked or invited to participate, just to clear that up. The other comment I would like to, to make is that regarding the travel in October for the Florida School Board Association, currently we have a sitting board member who was elected by the Florida School Board Association to serve as an executive leader, as treasurer of the Florida School Board Association. And that position holds until, you know, the end of November. And that is actually, believe it or not, a high honor. Very few people reach that state leadership level. And that is a position that she fills through the Florida School Board Association. And that is a conference that's coming up. And I know that typically for executive leadership, there, there is some defraying of costs, if I remember correctly, from that. It's, it's a annual Florida School Board, Board of Directors meeting. And, and that would be the reason that Board Member Anderson would be attending that meeting. Just in general, for board travel, I would like to say, for example, like the Council of Great City Schools, a trip that's coming up, that conference in Orlando, that you have urban districts, large urban districts from across the United States. It's a great opportunity for professional development and to learn best, best practices. And not every board member in this, you know, even in the state or the country can attend the, the Council of Great City Schools event because it is, but there's a specific number of students you have to have in your school district to even be a member of the, of the Council of Great City Schools. So I just wanted to clarify those things.
All right, let me, really quick, before moving discussion, I did, I did not put a motion on the floor, so let's do that really quick. Ask for a motion. By Board Member Pearson, second by Board Member Joyce. Now we're back into the portion, Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To piggy, piggyback on what Board Member Hershey said, the chamber trip is an opportunity for the board to learn what other districts are doing best practices and to partner with, as we continue to look at career technical education, it's a good opportunity for this board and their representative to talk and meet with some of those business owners who need our students to be prepared for those careers in the future. So I think it's very important. I think it's healthy. As, as noted, the city council always attends because there's a partnership and you need those relationships in order to improve the quality of education for everyone, whether it's city council or the school board. We did have a board member who probably would have been president of the Florida School Board Association, but she was term limited. And she also was high up in the Florida School Board Association, Becca Couch, as you might recall. And because of term limits, she did not finish out the, the term that she could have been president of the Florida School Board Association. So there, we have examples of board members who turned out, who still attended those conferences because they were very valuable and they had the experience to add to those conferences.
Board Member Pearson.
Sure, if anyone is interested, I can explain my travel. It's $287 as I read this. To attend each county or board has a representative on the FSBA, Florida School Boards Association Board of Directors. I'm serving in that capacity. Additionally, each board has someone who serves as a legislative liaison who will go and meet with the other legislative liaisons to work on the Florida School Boards Association's legislative agenda. I serve in both of those roles. And so I'm going to this meeting that will be first part FSBA Board of Directors, second part legislative liaison meeting. So it's a bit of a twofer because I'm traveling once and doing two meetings and I'm one person filling two roles instead of two people filling two roles. And so that is my $287 of this agenda.
Thank you for that. Board Member Joyce and Vice Chair.
Uh, through the chair, um, through the chair too, I don't know, I'm just making a comment. In the past, when, I know Board Member Hershey has said that specifically for the Jack's Chamber trip, I know that was the one that I think the most concern was addressed with the audience. And so with the, with that, I know that in the past, one board member has gone on that trip, but not every year. I would just like clarification. If a board member attends that trip, which I do think there could be value in that, is it, is it the practice of the district, the district to pay for that trip or the city to pay for that trip for the board member?
The district pays for it just, Mr. Jones can answer the question with, I'm assuming that the city pays for city council member trips.
That's correct. The city council budgets for the council president and one other person. Sometimes the vice chair, sometimes the finance committee chairperson attends, sometimes it's in three, but most times one or two.
Okay. And so this, it's been the practice of the school board to pay for the board member's trip on the Jack's Chamber trip?
Right. And Dr. Coker is currently the vice chair and it's my understanding that the, the chair asked her to attend because he was unable. I'm putting words in the chair's mouth, but that was my understanding.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification.
Yeah, traditionally, we, we send a representative. And the reason why you have multiple people on is because we weren't sure who could actually go and we wanted to make sure we could clear it before, before this meeting. But we found out clarity in, in between, so that's why you see the one person who's on there. So appreciate that information. And that is the, the cost of that trip that all members, city council or otherwise, are, are paying for that trip, for that Nashville trip. Other comments or thoughts? Ma'am, we're past the public comment, unfortunately. Yeah, we're, we, we're, we're past it. No, 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 ma'am, we're past it. Thank you.
No, no, I want to tell you that
Thank you very much.
My husband was chairman of the chamber.
Thank you, thank you. I know, I know, but we're past it. I don't want to break protocol.
Anderson was formed due to the trip to Baltimore.
Thank you. So any other further comments or discussion on the board travel? All right, seeing here now, I'm gonna go ahead and call for your vote. By your action, you have approved Board Member Travel 7-0. Onto superintendent's travel, that the Duval County School Board approved the following superintendent's travel. September 28th through 30th, 2022, Orlando, Florida, Association District Schools Superintendent Fad's Annual Fall Leadership Conference 2022. November 2nd, 2022, Dallas, Texas, Ed Week Market Brief Summit. Ask for a motion.
So move.
Move by Board Member Anderson, second by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing now, I'll call for your vote. By your action, you have approved Superintendent Travel 7-0. Now on to for the record. You're gonna switch it up. We're gonna start with Board Member Joyce.
Oh.
Look at that. See, got you off guard.
No, that's fine. I think my only for the record tonight was the, on the board travel, my name came off for the Salt Lake City, Utah, and for the Council of Great City Schools in Orlando. And I just wanted to clarify because I have a brand new baby, a grandbaby. And momma's gotta go back to work in the middle of October and grandma's requested to come babysit for a little while. So I'm gonna be available all the time from now till the end of the year to make sure that I am available to babysit that grandbaby. But I do think there's value in those two trips. I love to go to the Council of Great City Schools Conference and I was looking forward to taking the professional development trip out to Salt Lake City, Utah. But I did wanna go on the record to say it's because of my grandbaby that I'm not going. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Joyce. We're gonna flip it to the other side. Board Member Hershey.
Board Member Jones and I just got back from Atlanta attending COSPA's inaugural conference. And while my favorite word has been "all," Board Member Jones and I learned a different word and I will let him introduce that word to you. So we've got another word to add to "all." I just wanted to remind everyone that September 24th at 9 o'clock at Mandarin Oaks, I will be, we will be having a farm share event. This is in partnership with Councilman Boylan. We are sponsoring this event at Mandarin Oaks and I hope that people will come out. It is a great opportunity to meet the needs of people in our community. And if you've never done a farm share event, you need to because it is, it is a very fulfilling event to be able to reach out and provide food for people in your community. The other thing I want to remind people of, it's coming up in October 6th, so mark your calendars, mark your calendars. Dr. Green's favorite thing that she likes to do with me and that's chat with the superintendent. It's going to be at Greenland Pines at 6 o'clock and that's October 6th, so I want people to go ahead and get that on their calendar. And the final thing I have to say is a couple of weeks ago, there was this football game and I was confident that Atlantic Coast was gonna beat Terry Parker. That did not happen. And so Dr. Coker brought me this, we're number one, go Parker. And I would just like to remind Dr. Coker that there are other sports, soccer, you know, baseball, softball, but somewhere in there, Atlantic Coast is gonna come back and get the win. And certainly next year, I hope that I will be celebrating an Atlantic Coast win, but do want to give a shout out to Parker because you won. And it was, it was a great little rivalry to get going.
Excellent. Where's, did you get the phone finger from? Amazon?
Amazon has everything.
Came quick.
Sorry. Amazon has everything.
She was ready to push buy instantly.
I had a lot of fun.
Let's switch it over because now I wanna hear this new word from Board Member Jones. So Board Member Jones.
The new word is "and." The speaker pointed out that a gentleman named Walton was told that he couldn't sell groceries and dry goods in the same place and it wouldn't work. And so he, and he added, it's not either or, it's and. So he, and by adding dry goods, Walmart became a, a big retailer and Sears now is out of business virtually. So that's what, that was one of the points that was made. what, that was one of the points that was made that we learned that as a board, we need to work on using the word "and" more than it's either or. And it was very informative, very, and put together in such a short period of time, just four months. So COSPA did a great job. So I wish everybody could have been there for that. Had a couple of, a couple of announcements for District Five, School Board District Five, on this Wednesday night at 6:30 at Westside High School. Chief Burton will be conducting his school safety night at 6:30, 5530 Firestone Road. That's where Westside High is located. We've had a number of, of parents who are concerned about the students walking to and from school, having to pass the homeless that are now living underneath 295. A couple of years ago, to your point on your presentation, we had two young ladies that were hit in the walkway going to school one morning at seven o'clock. It was dark and the weather must, the lady who made the left turn didn't see them. And fortunately, they were not seriously hurt, but they were hit by the vehicle. So I encourage all the parents and supporters and community in Westside High School to attend that meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday at 6:30 at Westside High. We also have a meeting at West Jacksonville Elementary School Site for Thursday, September 22nd at six o'clock at 1083 Lyon Street to talk about the plans to redevelop the West Jacksonville Elementary School Site. We don't want to get into the situation we got in with Lake Forest and we want to avoid that, want to be proactive. So we will be having a meeting on, on Thursday, September 22nd at six o'clock at 1083 Lyon Street, which is the Senior Citizen Center right next to the school in the same block. And that's, the meeting is very important. I want to also encourage our employees to take advantage of employee assistance. We had a teacher, a 12-year teacher, Ms. Catherine Crookman, who was found slumped over her wheelchair, I mean, over her steering wheel at James Weldon Johnson. And by the time rescue got her to the hospital, she had passed. And just to know what people are going through, the stress, the, how we politicize education. Teachers are under a lot of stress. I just want to encourage teachers to take advantage of employee assistance programs. When you need it, don't wait until things get so intense and stressful that you fall in poor health. Also, a special shout out to Daniel Flint for the Florida History Teacher of the Year Award. I think it shows how much work, good work our teachers are doing throughout the district. And also a shout out to George Washington Carver. They were selected as positively jacked last month. Teacher Tiffany Scott talked about how the school was able to move from an F to a C in one year. And Principal Charlene James supported that, that teacher and that school. And hopefully this year, they'll get that B that they've been long, or next year when the grades come out. And finally, a shout out to Coach Maslin Rains High School for being selected Coach of the Year, Coach of the Week, I'm sorry, by the Jacksonville Jaguar Foundation. Thank you for all that you do, Mr. Chairman. I know it's been a rough three or four months here sitting in the hot seat, but we appreciate what you do too. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Let's swing it on back over to Board Member Pearson.
So much good stuff. I wish that we could do this at the beginning of the meeting instead of at the end. Hopefully some people have gone home and tuned in and they're watching the end of the meeting from home. Thank you to Chair Willie for highlighting the pedestrian safety issue and to Dr. Pierce and the communications team for making the PSA, which I was able to share with parents at Landon, Julia Landon College Preparatory and Leadership Development School, which is located a block off Atlantic and a block off Hendrix. And quite an urban campus, although I think people don't think of it so much. As San Marco develops with storefronts being filled in and more people coming through the intersection, it has become quite a dicey and perilous trip to school for the students in the neighborhood who walk and bike to school. I also want to thank Public Works Director Pappas and Council Members Cumber and Carlucci for working with me over the summer to help with some of the traffic marking issues on Atlantic Boulevard. I would say to the public, when you see the flashing lights, there are a number of these newer box flashing crosswalks. When you see those flashing lights, that they're kind of new to us as motorists, but when you see them, realize someone has pushed the button to make that, those lights flash. And so when you see the flashing lights, be prepared to stop because there is a pedestrian attached to those flashing lights. And if you're on Atlantic Boulevard at Mango, there is more than likely an 11, 12, or 13-year-old student who has pushed that light and is trying to cross four lanes in a median trying to get to school. And so that can be Hendrix Avenue, it can be anywhere around the county, but just please, please be aware of those new flashing pedestrian lights. Second on my list was so fun Saturday morning to get to attend the Parents Who Lead kickoff. And for those of you who don't know, it's a 20-week commitment that parents and our volunteer mentors make to go through this training that ends with a project of advocacy either for an individual at an individual school or a legislative issue or something within the county that they feel passionate about, that they want to see change happen in that area. So I want to thank the parents and the mentors for making that commitment and look forward to rounding out at the end of 20 weeks to see what their projects are and going to that as well. I also, on Saturday morning, had the opportunity to attend the City Year kickoff. And thank you to the City Year members who are going to be assisting on the elementary, middle, and high school level. These young adults are taking a gap year or two, or sometimes three, to work in our schools. And they're either post-high school or mid-college or post-college students. They have a tremendous amount of energy and they are a great asset to our schools where they are. I also want to send a shout out to Alicia Baumann, who is attending our meeting and staying till the end, but also for the tremendous leadership and mentorship that she gives these young students. Dr. Green mentioned the staff who have pitched in to help with needs in the classroom. And I want to thank Ms. Torino and the staff at Inglewood High School for welcoming me. I spent the A-Day, so Monday, Wednesday, Friday of the first week of school, teaching ninth grade ELA. It's always kind of, I was an English major in, in high, or in college and it was kind of on my bucket list to teach English one day. I won't rule it out, but I did learn what a tough job that is and, and do have a great appreciation for students or for teachers, especially those who teach Level One ELL classes and trying to teach English in that, in that circumstance. Also, I want to thank our HR staff led by Ms. Schultz for their creativity and taking advantage of opportunities to continue to promote DCPS and the job opportunities we have within the district. And they are now, they've put together a traveling road show and they are going around to different civic groups and organizations trying to pitch opportunities within DCPS or with ESS, our substitute contractor. I'm hearing that they're kind of coming up with, you know, one, one good prospect per, but if you're part of a civic group or an alumni group or a church or some kind of group where people gather and you would be interested in having the traveling DCPS road show come to your organization, if you think you have members of your group who would be interested in investing in our students in some capacity, please reach out to our HR department and they could schedule a time to come and speak to your group. Something else that's pretty exciting in our strategic plan, number, our goal number three. When we were putting this together, we made something up and we said, hello, staff, we want you to create a new program. And they've done it. So this year, in an effort to improve post-secondary readiness of graduates by increasing the number of students earning soft skills credentials, our staff led by Mr. Wright and Jill Fearley, and in cooperation with high school principals and other building leaders and staff, have put together Duval Ready. And this is the launch for the school year. They're launching with a pilot group of students at each high school. And the students are going to work through an established curriculum called Florida Ready to Work, but they're going to be focusing on things that, we talked about the Chamber of Commerce and partnerships that we have, things that our business community has said they want our students to have when they're graduating. And so they're going to look at professionalism, communication, teamwork, and problem solving. And in order to receive the Duval Ready diploma, the students are going to have to go through a capstone experience to show that they have mastery of these skills. So this is something, an example where the board just said, we want you to do this. Mr. Wright and his team have put together a program and now we're launching and we're going to, I think, see great benefits from this. And that is all for me.
Thank you. Great updates. Board Member Anderson.
Thank you. I first will say welcome back to everybody that started a school year. We got off to kindergarten. My little one thinks he is now grown. He just turned six, but I think he might think he's 16. He even like, didn't want me to hug him too long at the bus stop. Mom's having some, letting go. But, welcome back. I hope everyone has been off to a great school year. Congratulations to district staff for getting open, but I definitely want to say congratulations to the chairman and to the district on the passage of the village. I am really excited to be able to invest in our educators and look forward to how that's really going to help benefit Duval County Public Schools moving forward. We have done really some incredible work over the last several years. And I am, I'm proud of it and I look forward to, to watching us reap the benefits in our schools and classrooms. Beyond that, I have the honor of being a part of Leadership Florida. And during my time last week at Leadership Florida, Dr. Nathaniel Glover was there speaking to us. And he referenced a line from the Rudyard Kipling poem, "If." And it was just such a beautiful line. And as I read through the poem, I just felt like all of it was not just like a couple of words of wisdom, all of it was just very wise. And so I will take a point of privilege because I couldn't say it any better than Rudyard Kipling and read the poem for you. "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you; if you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too; if you can wait and not be tired by waiting, or being lied about, don't deal in lies; or being hated, don't give way to hating; and yet don't look too good, nor talk too wise; if you can dream and not make dreams your master; if you can think and not make thoughts your aim; if you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same; if you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by knaves to make a trap for fools; or watch the things you gave your life to broken, and stoop and build them up with worn-out tools; if you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it on one turn of pitch and toss, and lose and start again at your beginnings, and never breathe a word about your loss; if you can force your heart and nerve and sin you to serve your turn long after they're gone; and so hold on when there is nothing in you except the will with which says to them, 'Hold on.' If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings, nor lose the common touch; if neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you; if all men count with you, but none too much; if you can fill the unforgiving minute with sixty seconds' worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it. And, which is more, you'll be a man, my son."
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Coker?
I don't know that I want to follow Dr. Nat Glover and Rudyard Kipling quoted together. That's a lot.
Whatever you read will snap at the end.
Oof, just saying. I, I, a lot of celebrations from me and a lot of thank yous as we started school. I want to thank the Arlington Optimists, a small group of people in Arlington who came together and did a book drive that resulted in all of the first graders and each of the seven elementaries that feed into Parker getting books for their home libraries. As you know, the Arlington community is just still keeping it, making it happen. And I'm just grateful to the Arlington Optimists to make sure that our children have print-rich environments in their home. I want to thank Tony Baselli for his activities as we opened school, the Baselli Foundation. And Tony Baselli, while he was being inducted into the Hall of Fame, managed to make it out to Academy Sports to celebrate 100 of our teachers, gave them gift cards, not for their classrooms, but for them to get something that would help with their own stress, their own mental health. So they were buying Tina shoes and all kinds of stuff. So thank you to Tony Baselli. And of course, congratulations on the Hall of Fame piece as well. I believe this is the 10th anniversary of the Baselli Foundation, as a matter of fact. Want to also give a shout out to Betty Bernie and the I'm a Star Foundation, who are always on the move, but we're on the move again with a cryptocurrency class completion. The class was offered through the Jacksonville Chamber, but the children who are part of I'm a Star were able to participate. So congratulations to Betty Bernie and her team on that. I also, like Board Member Pearson, wanted to celebrate the City Year Welcome Back. You were in my notes as well. I see Alicia back there trying to hide, I think. Congratulations to you. I think that was the first time y'all have had an in-person Welcome Back in a couple of years. So thank you for your leadership in making that happen and congratulate your team. I do believe this is the 10th anniversary of City Year. I know there are some of us in the room who were here when it first came. And I think we can all attest to the fact that it's made its impact and its mark in our community. So thank you for your continued leadership. Also wanted to, like Board Member Pearson, she was in my head or I was in her head, on the Parent Training, Parent Leadership Training Institute that happened. Incredible event. I just felt so happy sitting in that room, watching all the nonprofits that were helping us, all the parents who are ready to be leaders in our community. But wanted also to do a special shout out to Brandon Mack and Reagan Copeland for their leadership on that. Brandon Mack, his energy is just unmatched. And Reagan Copeland, her polish and, and passion for the work is, is just incredible. I also want to make sure I thank Dr. Green and Corey Wright's team for including us in the Summer Commencement. I went to that item last Thursday. And I'll tell you, my two favorite commencements in this district, probably Marine Science Center has a special piece to it, but the Summer Commencement, you want to talk about happy children, happy parents. It took them a little longer to get across the finish line, but man, there was a lot of whooping and hollering and it was a great event and incredibly well done. Again, thank you to Corey Wright and also Wendy Dunlap for her continued leadership on that item. And also to Riverside High School for hosting. I had the privilege of actually shaking the hand with some Riverside High School graduates. It's the first time we've had that diploma and that was an incredible privilege for me. I do, as a point of personal privilege, I want to recognize Coordinator Phil Little. He was recently, I wasn't going to do this. He was recently given the Fran Peacock Coker Community Service Award by the Florida Chapter of the American Board of Trial Lawyers. This is an award that was developed after my mom passed away 15 years ago. And it's given to people in the state of Florida who exhibit incredibly, incredible community leadership and volunteerism. He was actually, I was not involved in the decision. It came to them on their own. I mean, his work has gotten very well-known throughout the state in championing civics education through the Teachers Law School and the Seventh Amendment Symposium programs. I personally have known Phil for years. I know my mother is smiling knowing that he received that award. And I wanted to make sure I went on record with that. He is super deserving. That being said, Board Member Hershey, can you hold that Parker item up one last time? I just, you look so good with that. You really look good with that. Anyway, I do want to thank my friend and colleague, Board Member Hershey, for her gentlewoman's bet that we had. We know that these two like to engage in that fairly routinely. So thank you. I did enjoy coming out as the winner and I will continue to remind you of that. And enjoy a token from Amazon from me.
Love it. Thank you for that. I'll be pretty brief. Number one, I wanted to just state, I wanted to get us into school for one of our board workshops. So we'll be at Springfield Middle tomorrow, be able to experience that. But also, the Minecraft lab is there. So I know Jim Culver's really excited for folks to see that. So we've worked out an arrangement for everybody to see that in a way where it's not against sunshine and whatnot. So that's going to be a fantastic board workshop tomorrow, some great items on there and a great environment to sort of soak in that information. Also, just a shout out to Nadine Ebri, who is, who works over there in Minecraft lab, but also over the summer. but also, over the summer, forgot to mention this, put together something with the Urban League Young Professionals to sort of clear out and clean out the courtyard in the middle. So if you walk by there, you'll be able to see that. So it just goes to show, like, folks are in our schools, but they also care so much to go outside of what they do in the classroom and in their current roles to sort of pour back into our schools. So I wanted to mention that. NAACP, we're going to be doing a school visit with some of the education committee from NAACP. It's what a great opportunity, now that the schools are, are back open. We want to make sure that, that folks who are advocating for us get a chance to see what's going on in our schools. So really excited about that visit that we're going to be doing with the NAACP Education Committee. Next, shout-out to Biscayne Elementary School. Ms. Reyes and Ms. Lee, teachers over there, had a, had an idea about a community garden, and they made it happen. So just, a couple of weeks ago, there's going to be a huge community garden at Biscayne, and a great space where they'll actually have, use that for, for tools, for learning, for students to learn about the science, the math, all the pieces that connect to a community garden. What a great space that they created. A seed was planted by them, and now it's a thing. And thanks to Principal McBride for putting on a great program. The families came out for ribbon-cutting, so it was a really great honor to see that happen, and cool to see that our teachers, once again, with these seeds that plant, and they can bloom into something. Today was a meet and greet for the new Darnell Cookman principal, Paul Davis. So we were here, couldn't make it over there, but congratulations to Mr. Davis, great leadership. I saw him leading at Stanton, and now he's going to be at Darnell Cookman. So exciting for his leadership, and what's going to happen over there with Darnell Cookman. Also, last two things. I got an email from a student who's not, no longer here in Duval County, but stood at the podium, I think, last year, to talk about dress code and changes, and wanted to be an advocate. And we actually, that, that community group came together with all these pieces, and we did make some changes to our dress code. It's updated on our website, and he emailed to say thank you. He's a freshman at University of Florida. Go Dogs, but, you know, whatever. I'll give him that. But he's a freshman, and just wanted to email and say, "Thank you for listening. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you for following up and following through." And that's what we do. Like, that's something that is natural for us, to listen and take in ideas, and that's what we're going to continue to do as a board. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, because he just sent the email, I think, earlier today. Last two things. Amazing opportunity, first day of school. I was at Gilbert, teaching math on the first day, and what a joy to be in our schools. And amazing leadership, Principal Parker over there, a clean, smooth first day of school, and it's been that way ever since. So I just want to really connect and shout her out, and what a great opportunity for us to be in schools and whatnot. And last, every October, I'm usually not the chair, but I always do like a kick-cancer thing, and we wear pink and tennis shoes up here in October. For folks who are survivors, my mom's a survivor, any other survivors out there, just want to show gratitude to the folks who, who've been through that. So if you indulge me, we're going to wear some pink, we're going to wear tennis shoes, because we're kicking cancer out the building and out wherever we can. So if you can indulge me in that, that would be great. That's going to be at the next board meeting. Public, please, if you're coming, we may not let you speak unless you're wearing pink. Actually, I can't say that. But if you would indulge and do that, it would be wonderful, so we can really show our support for all those survivors out there and warriors that we know are in our hearts. So that's all for me. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. By Board Member Pearson, second by Board Member Anderson. All those in favor with a hand vote. Eyes, eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.